Regular meeting of the city council to order for Monday, December 16. We have a full gallery this morning and want to welcome everyone today. And we're not probably going to be at our sharpest today with the finish of the World Junior A Hockey Challenge this weekend and we had an amazing time. And I might have been a little bit exuberant and so I'm paying the price today as a result of that exuberance. So, welcome, everybody. Our first order of business this morning is our delegations and this morning it's our pleasure to be able to present the City of Dawson Creek 2019 Community Awards and these awards are participation by different organizations within the community. So, we have some of the sponsors of the awards with us this morning to join in and do those. So, I'd like to start out this morning with the first award we're going to go with is the Entrepreneur of the Year Award and the sponsor of that is our Community Futures and Sue Kennedy is here. So, if I can have Sue come up.
Can I take pictures? Does that mean? Did you bring your phone? Actually, I don't have my phone.
Good morning. Welcome. How are you?
I'm good.
So, it's this morning, the first award is the Entrepreneur of the Year. The nominees for the award were Karina Wingerak of WFG in Dawson Creek and Marguerite Abbey of Abbey Law Corporation. And the award this year, the Entrepreneur of the Year is the same sponsored by Community Futures. The recipient of the award always goes above and beyond for their clients taking time to understand their needs and the wealth of knowledge, professionalism, compassion is something to be admired and we want to offer congratulations to Marguerite Abbey of Abbey Law.
The first one, so I don't know what to do.
You just had me.
Just smile, yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
It's such an amazing, I think, opportunity for us to be able to recognize these awards and obviously to be able to do this at this time of the year makes it that much special. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And you're welcome.
Twenty minutes.
Twenty, okay. The next is our Business of the Year and this is sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce and so I'd ask Chris if Chris Richards is the president of the Chamber, if Chris could come up and join me. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
So, this year, the Business of the Year and there was a number of nominees this year, which is really, I think, really a testament to the business community of Dawson Creek and the small business community that really builds and is the foundation of the economy of our community. And the nominees for Business of the Year were Charmed Beauty Salon, Corlane Sporting Goods, DC Recycling, Faking Sanity, Peace Country Toyota, RBC, SL Enterprises, Tiger Office Plus, and Tower Therapy. And as I say, I think that's just a real terrific message in our community where we have that many businesses being recognized through this nomination process to be recognized as the Business of the Year. The recipient of the award is recognized as a top performer in their industry across North America with custom products in demand and their expert staff relied on by many. They generously donate to numerous community events while continuing to push into new markets. This recipient remains a family-owned business located in Dawson Creek. Congratulations to Corlane Sporting Goods. Great job, you guys. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Great job, you guys.
Gotcha.
Get in here, mister. Congratulations.
Well, better get out of that. My Christmas watch.
The 50th watch. Congratulations, you guys. And you know, honestly, to me, to think back on the origins of Corlane Sporting Goods and Jack was the founder, right? Built this, started this in our community and downtown Dawson Creek. There you are, you guys, how many years later, continuing with the family and amazing what you guys have done and developed and uniqueness of it. So, congratulations, honestly.
Thank you.
We're so proud of you guys.
Thank you.
Want to say anything? Can you guys want to say a few words at all?
Well, it's an honor. I don't know what to say. I mean, this is, yeah, my father ran it for 28 years. My brother, sister and I ran it for another 28 and a year and a half ago Greg and Aaron shooed in and here we are 57 years later. So, I don't know, there's not a lot of businesses that have stood the test of time, but it's still fun and I enjoy it and I'm real happy to have these guys with me as partners unless they can run for another 28.
The key is you guys just got to keep having babies, right? Keep it going.
We're honored. We totally pull over that. We got a couple of them.
Congratulations, you guys. It's a terrific honor.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. The next award this morning is the Inclusive Workplace of the Year and the sponsor is the Community Inclusion and Employment Services. Stacy is here with us today to join in this. Good morning. Welcome. Thank you for being here this morning. The nominees for this award this year are Faking Sanity and Fitness for Life. The recipient of the award really puts their heart into their work, they're known to work very hard to make sure everyone feels comfortable, safe, and welcome in their establishment. Those who run this workplace go above and beyond. Congratulations to Faking Sanity. Congratulations. Great job. Great job. Obviously, this one, I think, for all of us, inclusion into our community, into our workplace, into our lives is such an important message and I think it's a terrific representation for you guys to be able to receive this award and speaks to the work you do every day and we thank you for that. Thank you. Do you want to say a few words?
Just, it was a shock to be nominated and it's just cool that we were recognized for something that we care really and work really about, that everybody feels welcome and comfortable.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Good job.
Is our Youth of the Year here? No? So, I'm going to read it and we'll present it to the winner. So, the Youth of the Year and Amber from Coop is here. Unfortunately, the youth wasn't able to be here yet this morning, but we're going to read the award nomination and give her the recognition she deserves. And this, thank you for being here this morning, for the Dawson Coop sponsoring this. The recipient of the award is a young lady who has had to overcome a personal hardship and rather than becoming a victim, she decided to get back to the community by raising funds to purchase stuffed animals, to donate to the court system, to provide comfort for children. She is truly an exceptional youth that is always trying to think of ways to give back. We want to offer our congratulations to Hannah LaGue as the Youth of the Year this year. We will make sure that we get the award to her and want to take this opportunity to thank everybody for being here this morning. Congratulations to everybody nominated. I think it's a testament to those in our community that have taken the time to recognize all of you for outstanding contributions to the City of Dawson Creek and our community and we appreciate you being here this morning and thank you. Merry Christmas to everybody. And do we have one more? I just got to get this. I think that's all of them, isn't it?
No, Citizen of the Year.
Citizen of the Year. I don't, oh, there it is.
Missing the paper.
I'm missing, no, I think I got it. There it is. Citizen of the Year. And this is presented on behalf of the City of Dawson Creek and it's my pleasure to be able to do that this morning. The nominees for the Citizen of the Year this morning are Arlene Delawski, Connie Schmuckeit, Jacqueline Jansen, Meredith Thornton, Michelle Dempsey Rolls, and Wendy Davies. City of Dawson Creek is proud to be the sponsor of this. Recipient of this award is described as completely selfless when there's someone in need assisting without being asked. They recently brought together over 300 people to help a family in need. Without question, this recipient collected donations and organized an event from the goodness of their heart for a local family whose seven-year-old is suffering from leukemia. This year's recipient for Citizen of the Year has the heart of a saint. Congratulations to Connie Schmuckeit. You're going to watch, too. Congratulations. Honestly, it's, it is the citizens that build community and
It's all of us.
It's all of us. But the people who voted for you and nominated you, I said it right, the heart of a saint and we appreciate what you've done. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Good job.
Did you want to do a speech or anything before you?
No, thanks.
Couldn't get out of here quick enough. Thank you, everybody, and we'll take a couple of minutes if people want to take now to opportunity to leave. Call ourselves back to order and our next delegation this morning is Jamie Maxwell from the Dawson Creek Triathlon Association, who's in attendance to give us an update on the 2020 Dawson Creek Triathlon. Good morning, Jamie. Welcome once again. We appreciate to have you back and it's always good to hear from you.
Sure. Okay. So, a year before this last summer, we suffered from late promotion and had a really scary event in 2018 where we only had 50 people. So, we had, we resolved to be more organized and promote properly and July 14, 2019 was really good weather, really good participation. We had over 100 registered and around 100 showed up. We had an announcer who'd been with us the year before and now knew what we were and what we were doing. So, Paul Brent was our announcer and he really, between the level of participation, like in some events, you get this critical sweet spot with the number of bodies and people having a good time and we hit a real nice ambiance, fun factor on the day. The weather was great. He really clued in on what was important and we were all, he sort of organized us all when the last adult athlete came in and we all cheered her in and stuff like that. It was a really good day. But last year, we had to get a new traffic control contractor and the highways department got really involved. I don't know if you, we crossed the highway. So, that's Ministry of Highways and we've had a permit for a long time, but this year Ministry of Highways got right involved. And so, we had to get a key from West Canada Electric and both lights had to be switched to flash mode yellow and it was a long day. We had six traffic control staff, but now the highways department is really happy with the plan and says it can be used forever. I don't know if you know, but we swim in the pool, we ride basically the back road to Pous. We do go up the hill to O'Dwyers and then out to Railway Avenue in Pous. It is a really nice bike ride. People run it and ride it a lot. It's never really going to change because it's rural residential. There's never really going to be much development. It's a really nice bike route and it has a nasty little hill up to the O'Dwyers just to tamp a few people down. We run on the Dawson Trail. I don't, like, people don't access that end of the trail much because of the loss of the bridge behind the Dawson Mall and so that will always be an interest of mine and I have questions later for that. But the Dawson Trail is a really sweet hunk of nature right in our urban core. It's really nice in spite of design errors and the slewing and stuff like that. People are still using it. It's still currently being used by lots of people. Okay, so, our event includes both adults as individuals and as teams. A really big part of our event is the Kids of Steel. That's kids from age, children age four to 15 are technically Kids of Steel. And Triathlon Canada limits what you're allowed to make a little person do. So, it's really like, the age four and five is really pretty cute. I mean, we think that the spectator factor is huge because of Kids of Steel. So, there's about, the pool was full for Kids of Steel, just that race. That's about 30 kids. We're always in need of volunteers because we're running two races. We're running an adult race and we're running a kids' race and they aren't really on the same course. So, adults that are outrunning the adult bicycle course can't really get back in time to help with the kids' race. And this year, I did work with Tourism Dawson Creek, just a little late. Next year, we'll work with them a little bit more because of Tourism Dawson Creek and because you love these figures. Home Community, Cecil Lake One, Cleardale One, Dawson Creek Thirty, Fairview One, Fort Saint John Twelve, Grand Prairie Eleven, Hythe One, MD of Greenview, all the rest are sort of like one. Prince George One, Peace River Regional District One, Red Deer One, Spirit River Two, Sylvan Lake Two, Vanderhoof Two, Wanam Two. So, we do draw people from outside the region and, oh, right. So, we, I've been trying to talk to them about registered society status for about a year or two and they wouldn't really listen to me or I just couldn't get them engaged as executive. And then this year, we had to pay for traffic control and we didn't really understand how much had been donated the two years before by SL Enterprises. She donated for two years and when I was negotiating over the email and said, well, do you want to volunteer again? They went, please, no. And I said, well, oh, okay, what was that worth? And it was worth about $100 each year. And so, we ended up, we worked with Energetic and that was, anyway, we had to pay that fee this year and so we had about a $2,000 deficit after it was all over with 100 people. And then I ran the spreadsheet and showed it to the meeting and said, okay, now, okay, now, register society status, please. And so, we are a registered society now, the Dawson Creek Triathlon Association. We have six directors. Our budget's less than $10,000. I am working with Charlie Aurorison, grant writer, Dawson Creek. And the funny thing is, we didn't qualify for anything from NDIT because our event's not cultural. And so, anyway, there is a regional district grant that we will be applying for and actually, I don't know if you knew it, but Pomeroy has the Rural Discovery Destination Marketing Fund and we'll see about accessing some of that. And there is some, there's some local stuff we haven't investigated yet. So, the trail, let's see, is there anything? So, I did that. We will be July 12. So, again, because of Seals and because of, we'd like to include them and we know that's a non-Seals weekend. We would like to break away from that weekend, but just always worried that we'll mangle with Seals somehow. So, because I do feel like by being on the same weekend as Summer Cruise and probably Music in the Park, there's a drain on resources. Like, you know, we're all looking for some of the same resources in town, whether it's traffic barricades or volunteers. But we'll stay there this year. It will be, in the future, we'd like to move back one weekend. And do you have any questions?
Thank you, Jamie. Questions, Councilor Wilber?
Not a question, but something that you do qualify for is the Northern Health Imaginary Grant and you can apply for up to $5,000. So, I would look into that. It'll be coming up in the spring.
Would it be a 2021 grant?
Yes.
Right.
They're giving out in the year that you apply?
Actually, I think I've, I've been, I email with them sometimes because I did a report for Northern Health. Okay. Imaginary. Not now.
All right. Say you got a grant.
Yeah.
It was NDIT.
No, that was my wife.
Saying you don't have a grant.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Any other questions, thoughts?
Anything else, Council? Councilor Lecter?
Just a quick one, Jamie. Through, I noticed there's a few things that you've asked the City of and we'll look at that. The barricades, is it you'll take them, put them up with your volunteers?
What happens is, these days, what, I don't go get them anymore. The pool manager requests them and they get delivered.
Okay.
And, but we tend to share them with Summer Cruise. So, in, on the Saturday, they have the burnout in front.
Yeah.
And then they get used there and then when I get there Sunday morning, they've all been moved somehow, some way. They all get moved around. I use barricades from Incana Event Center as well.
All right.
And then, yeah, yeah, our volunteers put out our barricades. Yeah. And then, so, our kids' race has evolved. So, now, the cycling is all through the soccer park and out onto the end of the pavement on 116th where the gravel transition is and that was the best so far. We did experience real, so apparently, just putting up a barricade doesn't mean people stop. It means they stop and they move the barricade and they drive through. So, our lesson over time has been that really if you don't put a human at the barricade with a sign and a vest, the people don't obey it. And that's a goal this year is that some of the critical barricades, like, we barricaded the highway at 116th or First Avenue, First Street and someone drove through there. You know, and the traffic control staff from Energetic watched them because it wasn't their job. They're in the intersection, you know, putting cyclists through. So, yeah, so that's, but 116th, we try to close, you know, as much as we can to make it safe for youth and adults running there. But, okay, so there's that. Oh, I am interested in your, where are you with budgeting for the trail? Because a long time ago, I was told that the bridge by Tenth Street, the new pedestrian bridge, was going to get moved behind the mall to replace the damaged bridge. That's one issue. And then, well, the slewing we're living with, like, I don't know, just behind the cemetery, if you go down, there's a bend in the creek where really the design of the trail was not that great. And the bend in the creek sloughs into the trail, but that's not the issue. I'm really interested in what your thoughts are on cleaning up that portion of the trail from Eighth Street to the pool.
Okay. So, through your worship, we don't cut that section of trail and it was either last year or the year before, we had some significant movement in the bank in there and so this spring, we'll have to take another look and ensure that that part of the trail is usable. If you recall, we had a tension crack essentially in that area that was sliding away into the creek. Last year, Ken? Yeah, last year.
And the bridge at Tenth Street that we put in there was a temporary bridge for pedestrian access during the construction of the bridge, but it is intended, it was paid for by the insurance, was it not?
Yes. Through your worship, the intent was to move that bridge over. At this point, that bridge has not been moved over and we don't have budget this year or we haven't planned to move it over this year. You know, the concern is that there's, the trail is closed from the cemetery on and it would be a bridge to a closed section of trail.
So, that's the work that will go through Council?
Well, it's a vibrant trail that's in use.
Yeah.
People are using it all the time and the sloughed portion hasn't moved lately. If we get another really wet spring with a lot of runoff, then it's probably going to move again. Okay.
Anything further from Council? Questions? Jamie, thank you so much for being in this morning. We appreciate it. We'll bring it back under Mayor's Business later in the agenda and go through the request of aspects for it. Thanks again. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
2.3, we have Michaela Vorsif here from Enbridge in attendance regarding some updates on projects. Welcome. Good morning.
Thank you.
Nice to have you here.
Thank you for having me. Do I need this to? I will, I'll put this down. I wasn't sure if I was setting this up.
That's too dark.
We'll all be snoozing.
I don't know if I'm exciting enough to keep you up, so it's Monday morning.
We're just lagging some hockey.
It's a busy
Double overtime.
Double overtime.
Welcome.
Wonderful. Thank you, Your Worship and Counselor. My name is Michaela Vorsif, so I am a community indigenous engagement for Enbridge based out of Fort St. John here. So, if you have any questions about Enbridge in the region, you're welcome to reach out to me at any point. I'm here really today to provide an update on Enbridge, our activities in northeast BC, both operations and projects. Just a quick shot of Enbridge assets across North America. So, we have about 13,000 employees across North America focused primarily on natural gas transportation, liquids transportation, as well as natural gas distribution, more on the eastern side of Canada. In BC, these assets are familiar as they went through West Coast, Duke, Spectra, now Enbridge. Over the last three years, I believe you're likely aware that we did sell gathering and processing assets to Brookfield Asset Management, North River Midstream. I'm sure Jay Morrison or perhaps Talisha Leto has come to talk to you. You're still seeing those gathering and processing assets on this map only because we have not yet transferred and closed Phase Two of that asset transfer. We are expecting that to happen very shortly. I'm told by the end of 2019, which is very quickly coming. So, we'll see when that happens. But our transmission assets are still here in BC and we will be keeping them. Enbridge is very interested in BC, both expansion to build out the asset base, but also looking potentially at West Coast access as well. So, I know the company is very interested in continuing to keep the relationships in our communities and also continuing to build those relationships. These numbers are for 2018, so we will be updating them shortly, but just some quick snapshots across BC, about 75 million in property taxes paid, almost 90 million in other taxes across BC. So, just a quick shot on our safety and operational activities. Our integrity program, which is really how we maintain and monitor this system, we're focused on meeting and exceeding all regulatory and industry safety standards, but also being prepared to respond in the event of an incident 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We do have our gas control center, which with the transfer and assets, will be moving to Calgary, but it is manned 24/7. So, focus on four main aspects, routine aerial patrols where we will fly our right-of-way and just ensure that if there's any encroachment on the right-of-way or any potential for third-party damage, that we're looking in and working collaboratively and proactively on that. But also, we will complete inline inspections, complete integrity digs, as well as any valve servicing and ongoing maintenance that is required in the event of that. I did want to provide an update on the response that we've undertaken since the incident that we had north of Prince George and this has been a really big focus over 2019 for the company as a whole, probably touching everybody across the company here in BC. So, we focused on really three main aspects. The first is enhanced pipeline inspection. So, we've run the latest generation of inline inspection tools throughout the entire transmission system, both on T-South, which is where the incident occurred, which T-South we refer to as Transmission South. It's everything south of Compressor Station Two of Willow Flats going all the way to the border, but then we also did it on our T-North asset. So, everything, obviously, north of Willow Flats, our pipeline going into Fort Nelson and then coming over into Alberta as well. So, this has almost But then we also did it on our T-North asset, so everything, obviously, north of Willow Flats, our pipeline going into Fort Nelson, and then coming over into Alberta as well. So this has almost doubled the amount of sensors than previous inspection tour, tools, and is more accurate at accessing potential problems such as stress corrosion cracking. We will be using this inline inspection going forward. From there, we implemented more enhanced maintenance screening criteria, so a more conservative approach when we actually take that data, and the engineers inspect it from our integrity group. We will be monitoring and, and be more proactive in our maintenance work based on that screening criteria. And then finally, in, in 2019, we about doubled the amount of integrity digs that we completed, where we would go in, excavate it around the pipeline, physically inspect that pipeline, recoat, repair, replace as required. So we completed this both with, on areas that were picked up with abnormalities that came up, but we also did validation digs, where their tools were saying everything was good, but we were going in just to make sure that what we were seeing through the inline inspection was actually what was happening on the ground. So we have our, our pipeline now, our transmission line is now back up to the maximum operating pressure. We had taken both a required reduction, pressure reduction on our T-South system, but also a voluntary pressure reduction on our T-North system, just to ensure that we were comfortable, and also that the regulator was comfortable with our maintenance program. Moving on to projects in northeast B.C., so our expansion projects. The first I have here is, is just one that we are starting out looking at. This Frontier project offers a bit of a change from building out our existing capacity base, which is the looping projects that we've been executing over the last five to 10 years have been focused on. We're looking at adding a value-add service to customers by extracting the natural gas liquids out of the transmission quality gas. So even within the transmission quality, even like, it's the gas that we would use to heat our homes, there is still natural gas liquids in train in there, and there's an opportunity to extract them, transport, and market them separately. And so we're looking at that proposal with our customers. We are starting to consult and work with communities, indigenous, and also local communities on potential routing for that natural gas liquids line, but also locations for a potential field back location, and it requires railway facilities as well. So more to come on this, really, high level at this point. We have submitted a project description to the environmental, B.C. Environmental Assessment Office, and are proceeding down that process as we refine the scope. If all goes according to plan, which of course may change where we're at right now in the project, we would not be looking at starting construction before 2022, 23, for an in-service date of 2024. The Spruce Ridge project is much, I guess, near in the future, so we have received regulatory approval for this project. There's about three or four different scopes, so the first one is a 24 kilometer, sorry, 25 kilometer 36-inch loop in around Chatwin. The second is another 13-kilometer 24-inch pipeline loop up in Aiken Creek. And then we will also be adding additional compression at existing stations. So as I mentioned, we've seen, received regulatory approval, both from the Canada Energy Regulator, formerly NEB, but also from the OGC for our provincial permits. We are looking to start looking at contracting strategies right now, likely starting some initial clearing up in Aiken Creek, but majority of construction for this project is going to be towards the end of 2020. The next project I've wanted to provide a quick update on is Compressor Station One Segregation Project. This is within Taylor, where we are looking at adding, replacing a compressor unit at our Compressor Station One, so that is adjacent to the McMahon facility, but also adding in a new meter skid, and equipment to allow for the independent operation of Compressor Station One. Previously, because we own both McMahon facility and Compressor Station One, we were sharing some equipment between the two facilities, but obviously with McMahon going over to North River Midstream, we will be looking to have this operate independently from that station. We will be submitting an application to the CER by the end of 2019, so as you can appreciate, people are busy up until the end of 2019 in Enbridge, and then we will be likely looking at construction towards the end of 2020. Finally, the T-South Reliability and Expansion Program. So this is focused on our Transmission South, so south of Willow Flats there, where we're looking at adding five additional compression units at existing stations. So we won't be building out the footprint of our compressor stations at all, it's all on existing facility. In addition to the units, we'll be adding in a new gas cooler as well, and any, there's some additional associate equipment as well with that. So we have received regulatory approval for this project in September. There was conditions for continuing Emergency Preparedness Education Program as well, along with that approval. So we are, are looking at meeting all of those conditions, and we'll be starting construction on this project likely in the New York, Q1, in the New York. The last, last initiative that I wanted to provide an update on is a program that is being implemented as a requirement for our NEB approval, or CER approval, for five of our recent projects in and around Caribou Habitat. So those in, south of Chatwin, we had our High Pine Expansion Project, the Wynwood Expansion Project, and then we had two smaller Pine River Aerial and Tubal Crossover Projects, as well as the Spruce Ridge Project, which I mentioned earlier. All have a footprint within Caribou Habitat, and as part of that approval from the CER, there was a requirement to look at offsetting in Caribou Habitat for the disturbance that we created there. So we have, are currently in a position right now to be looking for the locations of where we would put those offset. And this could be replanting, it could be looking at access controls in the area. We're very interested in working with local municipalities, regional district, as well as indigenous communities, on how we manage this effectively, given that it's going to, I think, could be potentially impactful as we look at this. We're starting out now, this is pretty much just the initial, this is what we're planning. Over the next year, we'll be looking to identify where those locations will actually be, if, if there are any groups or interests that have an interest in, in helping to identify where those locations may be, we're going to be working with them. But at the very least, we'll be coming back to communities with a plan to understand what the potential impact could be before we proceed with that work. Depending on the, the ratio calculation for the offsetting is dependent a little bit on where, where we're actually restoring habitat, and also with it, if it's in the light Caribou Habitat, if it's further away, but it could be anywhere between 300 to 600 hectares. So it's quite substantial as well. So that's really it for me. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you so much. Any questions for Councilor, Councilor Parsel?
Yes, thank you. The, what's the reason I missed it, for the two loops that have been put in, one at Chatwin and one at Aiken Creek? What's, why occur that expense?
So it's, almost all of our expansion projects are based on firm service contracts with customers. So we would be looking at, so customer would be looking for increased capacity at those locations. And then we would be, we would be meeting that as well. We always try to first make sure, because it's an aggregate system, and, and we would maximize what we have available, and then anything else in addition, we would then put in either additional compression or the loop to build up the capacity.
Councilor Lecter?
Thanks, your worship. Thanks for the presentation. It is always, I think, an important part, not just of our city, but our region, and Enbridge has contributed greatly to our economic being, so thank you for that. Two quick questions. You mentioned earlier in your presentation that you've reduced your pipeline pressures. Is that going to be a permanent issue? I mean, you're going to move less gas, as I understand it, so is that something you've done just voluntarily, or is it for a short period of time, then you'll put the pressure back up?
So I, thank you for letting me clarify. We had reduced it following the incident. It was required pressure reduction on our T-South, and it was voluntary on the T-North. But having completed the engineering assessments and the integrity program that we have completed over 2019, we've received approval for both to, to go, return back to maximum operating pressure. So coming into the winter heating season now, we're back up to maximum operating pressure on the system.
All right, thank you. And just a quick comment on the Caribou. It is very interesting to see, and I think something that's been missed for a lot of it. Industry has contributed to Caribou Habitat restoration for many years in this area, and I mean, this is a continuation of that. We hear you talk about your engagement process coming up as you look for options on your offsets, talking with communities. I thank you for that. That's, I think everybody's clear as to why I'm saying that. It hasn't happened in the past, and I think that's an important part. What I would say is, if you're going to go out and do that, make sure you engage the backcountry users as well, because you talked about controlling access. Access to the backcountry is a huge part of the lifestyle here in northeast B.C. Most people I know, without question, are respectful of the backcountry and the animals that live there, but just as you move forward on that, I think you're doing incredible work, and we look forward to it.
That's a great point, yes, absolutely. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? From Michaela? Thank you so much. We obviously, as Counselor Lecter indicated, Enbridge and now North River are a big part of the region for us, and we certainly appreciate, Michaela, you coming in this morning, giving us an update on some of the work that's ongoing and the work you guys are continuing to do. We appreciate you coming in this morning to do that for us. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you for having me.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas as well.
Item three, new counselor business.
Hockey, hockey, hockey.
It was that. We'll go to item four.
That's all they got.
We're hockeyed out.
Hockey, we're hockeyed.
Minutes, submit us for a regular meeting of Council for November 25th for adoption. Counselor Wilbur, Counselor Kemp, any errors or omissions? All in favor? Oppose, carried, thank you. Business arising from the minutes, anyone? Six, correspondence, we have six one, we have an email from Jocelyn Young, Manager of Public Affairs for CN, and this is a follow-up to the meeting that was held, Counselor Lecter, and I'm not sure who else were there for CN, so a follow. Counselor Lecter?
Just maybe if I could comment on this. This has been an issue in our community for some time, people have spoken to me, I live in an area, I think most of our community could hear. We've always said the movement of trains indicate, I think, partly a healthy economy, it's part of that, and we're supportive of that, but the concern was raised some time ago about trains at 2:00 in the morning, or 4:00 in the morning going through, and with the crossings having to blow the whistles, and waking people up, waking children up. So we met with CN to try and see what we could do, and I want to express my thanks. Their response was they will now shuttle trains through the community between 3:00 P.M. and 11:00 P.M. at night, so no more 1, 2, 3:00 in the morning. Jocelyn worked with us on this, and I just want to say thank you, and make sure the people in Dawson Creek know that, I know this was an issue for many who raised it with me even during the campaign. But it's a positive to see this kind of response from CN, and I thank them for their response.
Thank you. Absolutely, and I think there's some of the benefits for us attending UBCM, where we get the opportunity to raise some of the concerns of our community and to the various organizations, not just the government, but the industry as well. Show of motion? Go. Brenda's all over me. Counselor Lecter?
I would move that we receive the letter and send a response thanking them for their efforts.
We'll do that. Perfect. Second, Counselor Wilbur, discussion? All in favor? Oppose? That's carried, thank you. Six two, we have a letter from Lucy Lobmeier, Honors and Award Secretary from the Order of British Columbia, call for nominations. Counselor Lecter?
Your worship, on this, is, this is something we're going to reach out to the community to accept ideas, or is this just they're looking to counsel for? I mean, there's so many worthy people out there that could be nominated. How do we go about making sure the, the general public is aware of this? Do we put it on our website? Do we, I just don't know the process we'd use.
In the past, Duncan, Brenda? Do we, do we put it out on our own website, or is it just?
The options that this, through your worship, the options that the city could have would be to use Facebook website, and I'm, I can't recall at the moment what we've done in the past.
Sure. Through your worship, the ask is that we share the information with the municipality and stakeholders.
Yeah. So perhaps that way, if we have a motion that we put it on our own city communication tools, website, our website, as well as circulate it out to our various community organizations, like the Chamber and organizations like that, so we have a motion and directing us to do that, we'll do so. Counselor Kemp? Counselor Wilbur?
Sure.
Discussion? All in favor? Oppose, carried, thank you. Now, six three, we have a letter from Brock Carlton, the FCM CEO, regarding our FCM membership for 2019, 2020. Counselor Parsel?
I move that we pay the membership fee for the FCM of the amount of $2,960.91.
Second? Counselor Earl, discussion? Counselor Parsel?
Well, we, we, every municipality benefits from their lobbying, and, and I think we've got to double the amount of gas tax, for instance, last year as a result of their lobbying advocating for the need for federal support for infrastructure, so we benefit from their work.
Absolutely. Counselor Earl?
Just a note, your worship, one of the policy, policies we brought forward at NCLJ last year had to do with approaching, was it UBCM or FCM, about an additional fund or line item on the invoice for communities to help support those that might not have the financial means. I don't see that in the light item, or I'm not sure. I know the motion itself passed, I believe, at NCLJ, or NCLJ, the policy was supported by the organization.
Went to UBCM, but I don't know that it.
It did.
Counselor Wilbur?
Um, it, actually, it passed in the block. However, UBCM hasn't done any further work on it at this point, because they're dealing with all of those that passed, but it just, it passed in the block, so I'm just going to say it's on the list.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just wondering what the sta, if anybody knew the status of that, it would make UBCM.
It's in a pile.
Oh, lovely. All right, I look forward to seeing that in 2029.
Hopefully. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Oppose, carried, thank you. Six point four, we have an email from Fred Haynes, Mayor of Sanich, with a request, a letter of support to the premier. Counselor Lecter?
I would move we receive for information, your worship.
Thank you. Second, Counselor Wilbur? Any discussion on receiving for information? All in favor? Oppose, carried. See, my corporate officer corrected me.
Yes.
See? So we're allowed to discuss if we receive it for information.
She's got that signal now.
But you're not allowed to discuss the actual content of the motion, so that's, that was very good information. Thank you for that. Brenda? Seven, report, seven point one, we have a memo from the corporate officer regarding the motion to ratify the request we had sent out about the special transit service for the Better Homes Christmas Light Tour. Counselor Kemp? Second, Counselor Earl? All in favor? Oppose, carried, thank you. Report 19-172 from the Executive Assistant Regarding the Tourism Advisory Committee. Counselor Wilbur?
Sure, I'll move that report number 19-172 from the Executive Assistant Regarding Tourism Advisory Committee be received, further that the Tourism Advisory Committee be dissolved, and the remaining members of the committee be advised.
Thank you. Second, Counselor Kemp? Discussion? Counselor Earl and Counselor Wilbur?
Um, your worship, so while I agree with the recommendation, and I intend to support it, I do want to emphasize that the Tourism Advisory Committee, certainly the intent of passing this motion isn't to not continue to receive feedback from the various tourism and hospitality stakeholders in the community. The goal is to find a more effective model, and with Spectra now operating tourism, and Barry and Lindsay over there, I think they're fully capable of doing that without necessarily the formal constraints that this advisory committee would, and, and, which turned out to be kind of, I mean, they haven't met for a couple And then, which turned out to be kind of, I mean, they haven't met for a couple of years, and it's kind of fallen by the wayside, so it's not intended to, I guess, take anybody out of the equation. It's just looking for an equation that works.
Thank you. Counselor Wilbur?
I just wanted to put out there, thank you to the people that were on the committee and that provided some feedback to council at the time that we requested. So, you know, it takes a lot to step up and volunteer and kind of discuss some tough topics. So I just want to say thank you to those members that were on the board, and we appreciate the feedback we got from them.
Thank you. Further discussion? Yeah, absolutely. It was a different, I think, at that time, in council's direction in terms of what we were doing and what was being looked to in tourism and destination tourism and events work, all of it wrapped up. So we really appreciate the work and time that these volunteers put into the Tourism Advisory Committee, and as Counselor Earl's indicated, it's taking down a tangent today in terms of how council are moving forward with the whole aspect of it. So we felt it was appropriate to put a formal motion forward about the Tourism Advisory Committee, and we certainly will make sure that we notify those that have served on the committee, as well as those that are still there, that are direction and appreciation for them serving on the committee. Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Thank you. Item eight, eight point one, our bylaws, and this is the annual Consumer Price Index Amendment bylaws for consideration of adoption. Do you want them individually, or can they be done in bulk?
I suggest we do it in bulk.
All right, Brenda?
Through your worship, it can be reported with one motion.
Thank you.
I'd like to move that we adopt the amendment bylaws.
Thank you. Second, Counselor Earl? Discussion? Counselor Lecter?
Just a quick question. As we go through them and we see the lists with current fees, new fee, with no more pennies in our currency market, do we adjust them after? I note everything is in a 34 or 92. Is that standard, or do we now just do our math and lower it down to 90 or up to 95?
Duncan?
Through your worship, I'll just, Cindy worked on the bylaw, and get Cindy to just comment on that.
It would be rounded up or down accordingly if we were using cash, or we would use debit or credit for the exact amount.
Thank you. We should always round up. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Mayor's business, and first item is the leaders' table meeting, and so two weeks ago, I'm going to say, we attended as invited to meet at the leaders' table forum for the Caribou Recovery Strategy, the Caribou Recovery Plan, put forward through the premier. I was attended by industry, the CEO of Camp or Wes Fraser, the various ministries of the province, the deputies were there, the premier's chief of staff, the First Nations were represented by the chiefs, Wilson and Cameron. Three mayors were there, Mayor Cutray from Chatwin, Mayor Bertrand from Tumbler Ridge, myself, and Peace River Regional District Director and Vice Chair Dan Rose. Blair was there representing the premier's liaison. Federal government were there, represented by a couple of deputy ministers and senior folks. And so I think there's three components to the leaders' table that were really obvious and evident to me as a participant in the discussion and table. And the crux of going forward is as a partnership agreement that the federal government, the provincial government, and the First Nations, West Moberly and Soto have reached in regards to a recovery plan, and it's built around, I believe, the premise that the work that the First Nations have done to date and are moving forward with it are, have now drafted and agreed to this recovery plan. There are three really critical points in that recovery plan and that partnership agreement to me that are really critical, and we've heard this in our community and by the residents who are impacted by it. Backcountry access, the recovery plan, and the technical advisory, the technical working group around it, and to me, I've got it locked into there. And so we asked the question, each one of us from the local government, specifically that if the partnership agreement moves forward as it is, we still, as local government and representing our communities and our residents, are still going to be brought into the process after the fact, after the agreement is in place and those committees and that work is, and that is agreed to by the province, the federal government, and the First Nations. And so to me, unless we're, and we find a way to be built into that document where we have our residents, the backcountry user groups, the snowmobile federations, the hunters and guiders on that backcountry access, then we're still on the side. And to me, we asked the question, each one of us, the mayors and the chair of the PRD, or the vice chair, are you signing the document and will it be put in place in that? And we never got an answer to that, other than Chief Wilson, who said, we've initialed the document, but we haven't signed it, but we are looking to have that agreement formalized. And if, so anyway, for me now, moving forward, I really, I really believe this, that I think the federal government, the provincial government, and the First Nations have locked into this direction of moving forward with what they feel and see as an effective model and method of moving forward for the Caribou recovery. And so I'm not sure what the next steps will be. We had a discussion this past week on Friday at the Peace River Regional District Board Table at our board meeting, and we've sent a draft of a letter that is going to be sent to the premier outlining that view that local government have with it, that for all of us that were there representing it, and we're going to send that letter on behalf of the Peace River Regional District. They're also asking us as local government representatives at the table and me as the mayor to sign that letter as well. And so I don't have a copy of the letter today because it just happened Friday, but I'm going to be looking for council support for me to sign that letter as the mayor, and I have given my support to send the letter as a director of the Peace River Regional District. Blair, do you want to jump in?
Certainly, your worship, and following through on that, the important issue here that we have said from the beginning is nobody has asked for anything to be removed from the partnership agreement. What local government has said, and I'll speak to the local government aspect of it, is from the beginning is put us in, put us into the agreement, not as signatories to the agreement, because people understand the constitutionality of the First Nations signing federal government, provincial. But the request has been, we want to be at the Caribou Recovery Committee table, local government wants to be at the Technical Working Group. There are some other factors in there, as the mayor has said, that probably, you know, and I'll oversimplify this, but probably five sentences added into the right sections of that partnership agreement will meet the objectives of what local governments need to ensure we can reflect and represent the people that we represent in this region. It is, at this point, somewhat, I guess, you know, as the premier's liaison on this file, I'm going to be a little cautious, but the meeting was not helpful in my mind. Local governments, I sat as pretty much an observer. Every one of our local government representatives, including the deputy mayor of McKenzie, asked the direct question of all four signatories or potential signatories to that agreement. Will you put a clause into the agreement that puts local government there in a meaningful way? And not one person answered the question. It was disheartening, to say the least. So I know the regional district has dealt with this letter, they've sent a letter, I am wholeheartedly in support, your worship, of you signing a letter on behalf of the residents that we represent in Dawson Creek. The ask we've got is a pretty straightforward ask. If you, if you say let us into the agreement, stencil us in as meaningful participants, that's not asking too much. If you look to the Alberta side right now, and you look at how they're going about it, they are going to consult with the local communities, with the backcountry users, with the First Nations. Everything we've asked for, 20 minutes to the east of us they're doing, yet here in British Columbia, it seems that we just are nonentities. It's unfortunate. So I'm still going to remain optimistic until we get, I guess, to a point where we can't be, but a simple ask, let us into the agreement, put us in as meaningful participants, and we can solve this. I think this is an issue about neighbors working together more than it is about the federal and provincial governments, you know, getting involved.
Yeah, I want to, I want to talk about one specific point to me that, and I think it's really easy, sometimes you lose focus about what this is really should be about and what it is about, not what it should be, what it is about. And it's about a threatened species, it's about Caribou. And to me, the most successful way forward, if we're going to ensure that we see the species thrive and survive, is for all of us to be there together, working together to see an effective strategy for the Caribou to thrive and survive. And so the backcountry access in that agreement is one component of that. For us to be there representing our community with our residents, with our backcountry users, saying, if there are areas that the Caribou are critical habitat for them, are critical wintering range or critical summer range, we want to make sure we're, I do, I'm just going to say that, I want to make sure we work together to protect that species. I want us to be a part of that in that backcountry access. I want to be proactively trying to see that those herds thrive and survive. And I don't know how you can do it without having all of those backcountry users, the hunters, and the trappers, and all of those guys. And, and we also, we've talked about this, the racism, and they hate that the First Nations people are feeling on this whole aspect. And for me, I feel horrible that they've been exposed to this, and it's not fair, in my view, that they've, they face that in, in that way, because it shouldn't be. It shouldn't be all of us working together, as Blair said, as neighbors, trying to find a way to move forward. And so we'll see how, we'll see how, I honestly have no idea how it's going to move forward at this point. And we'll, we'll see where it goes.
Your worship, just following through, would it be the letter that you would like to put your name on as the mayor versus a director?
Yes.
Is it the same letter we're talking about?
Yes, exactly the same one that the RD have done, and they did a draft, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
We can circulate it to you guys later before the meeting's over today, and we'll get it back in if you can, and to get you guys, have a look at it, and then we'll get the approval to, for you guys, if you feel okay for me to sign it. Can we do that, Brenda?
Under mayor's business.
Under mayor's business, yeah. And we'll recess before I get mayor's business done.
All right.
Counselor Wilbur?
I'm happy to. I think mayor, or mayor, Counselor Lecter, I'm going to get shot one of these days. Counselor Lecter, I think already had a motion, already had a motion in there, so I'm happy to second that. I think you had mentioned that, if that's fine. I honestly think that the provincial and federal government created the divide between our First Nation communities and municipalities, and that's a sad, sad thing that we're working through, but I think we have to stick together, and I think we have, we should be included in those conversations at the very least, so I'm happy to support that.
I'm good to bring the letter back first before we do the motion, just so that you guys have a chance to look at it.
Okay.
Counselor Earl?
Yes, your worship, barring any run-on sentences, I intend to, I'm happy to support the letters.
Come on, I think he's speaking to your letters.
Yeah.
But no, just, and I agree, the fact that the provincial and federal government think that they can enact a program as complex and long-term as this one is likely to have to be without significant buy-in from most of the people in the region and without representation, I think is incredibly naive. Ottawa and Victoria are a long way away, and I think they maybe don't fully appreciate how much we need to be a part of this. So, yeah, I'm happy to support anything that will hopefully move forward. And I did have a chance to speak briefly with Vice Chair Rose on the meeting, and he echoed the sentiments you expressed here today, while not, he was a little saltier about it, but more or less.
Good, thank you. Thank you. So we'll get that letter back through the meeting today after. We had a, number two, the old growth strategic review, and we had some representation from, representatives from the Forest Lines Natural Resorts that are doing a strategic review on old growth forest in British Columbia, and they're traveling around the province seeking input, and we had a number of counselors, myself, that met with them a week or so ago. It was really, it was really a very useful, I thought, conversation, discussion about old growth, and certainly when, I think everybody leaps to the assumption when you hear old growth, that you're talking about the old growth on the west coast of British Columbia, but there's old growth in every region of the province, it's just different species of old growth. But anyway, they're seeking input from communities and residents and across the province, and it was a very worthwhile meeting. Anybody, anybody that was there have additional comments on that they would like to speak to?
Good meeting.
Item three, the World Junior A Hockey Challenge, and so obviously, we wrapped up the tournament last night with a unbelievably successful tournament, a week or 10 days of hockey and legacy action in the community that built and benefited our community and our region in so many ways. I want to thank Tumbler Ridge for hosting the Russian team for three days before the tournament. I want to thank Chatwin, West Moberly and Soto for hosting a game with, an exhibition game with Canada-US. I want to thank the City of Grand Prairie and the Grand Prairie Storm, who hosted the Czechs playing the Grand Prairie Storm in an exhibition game, City of Fort Saint John and the Fort Saint John Flyers, who hosted an exhibition game and a tournament game. The BC amateur hockey were in the community and in the region, left a legacy of floor hockey for some of the schools in our community, and every school, I'm sure it was six, seven, eight hundred dollars worth of equipment that they left. And so it was just on and on and on. It was more about a community and a regional engagement than it was just a specific hockey tournament, and we gained so much more than that, in my view, from it. It couldn't have ended, in my view, any better yesterday. An exciting game on Saturday with Canada beating USA in overtime, and then last night, Canada-Russia again, and how often or how many communities would love to be able to say that you hosted Team Canada versus Team Russia, gold medal game in your community, and the event center was alive with activity and excitement and people having fun in our community and residents from all over the region. And I want to thank the volunteers, because they worked their butts off for such a long time to make this happen, and you don't make it happen without the volunteers. The sponsors and the people who put money forward to help us do that, Peace River Regional District, who also, and the entire region, put $100,000 into this tournament for us to be able to host it. To the, all the teams and all of the officials and all of the folks, the referees who traveled in and had a great time. The parents that were here, and some of them are talking to them, and they were here, got the notice a week ago that they were traveling from Montreal or Toronto or Burlington to come to Dawson Creek for a week, and they just couldn't believe our facilities, they couldn't believe the hospitality they received in Dawson Creek from the residents and everywhere they had traveled. So we just, I want to, I want to specifically say thank you to Barry Reynard and Lindsay Bork, because they, it's, you know, you take people who have that passion to put these things on, and they let it, they put it together, they were the leads for it, and they did an unbelievably strong job, and that is representative of the eventsport tourism strategy that hopefully we continue to see the benefits of as we move forward. Counsel, any comments on? Thank you to Shailie and Amy as our fanskers, and Jeremy as our fanskers, who were out there promoting the puckster and all the stuff that they did. You guys did a great job, thank you.
We're feeling it today.
And then, part of it, we did a meet and greet. We, we had a social before the Johnny Reed event, where we hosted the Hockey Canada, CJHL, on behalf of the region, the Peace River Regional District, guys through the economic development, put some funding forward through that to allow us to host the meet and greet on Tuesday night before the Johnny Reed concert, and I thought it was very well-attended and really well-received and appreciated by the folks there. Last Thursday or Friday, I went to the Northern Lights College Holiday Luncheon with the Board of Governors and local mayors and folks, and we always appreciate the support of the college and the work they do in our community and supporting our community. And the one thing I'm going to shout out, I think we're in need of some perhaps board members that sit on the Northern Lights College, and so anybody that might be of an interest to serve in their community and on behalf of representing the Board of Governors at the Northern Lights College, they're always looking for directors, and if anybody has some interest, we should reach out and talk to the college about that, because that's a great opportunity to serve your community, and I believe they're looking for. a great opportunity to serve your community, and I believe they're looking for some folks to serve. Last Friday, I had the opportunity, got invited to go to Haven Family Services, Angela and Kira and Janelle have taken over the offices at Catholic Social Family Services office on 105th Avenue, and they're providing social services counseling into the community now, and it was really interesting to see that kind of opportunity that exists within your community, and sometimes you miss, that is a really valuable piece of a community that's providing that counseling and that family services in our community, and the girls are really passionate about what they're doing, and they do a great job, and so their officer over at 1209 on 105th Avenue, and encourage anybody, just drop by and say hello to them, and they're doing a great job. We have 9.2, we have invitation from the City of Fort St. John, Mayor Ackerman is hosting the annual High on Ice Carving Challenge in February in Fort St. John during their High on Ice Carnival, and so we just want to bring that up and let everybody know, and we'll be doing our best to get out to it. Do we have a formal request or anything in there that we, just the RSVP? So, we'll, we'll circulate that later as it gets closer and all centered, no doubt, to anybody that may be interested in us going up and doing the chainsaw carving on ice. I'm not allowed to use a chainsaw anymore. 9.3, we had Jamie in from the triathlon with a few requests. Duncan, can you speak to some of the aspects of it that Jamie has that impact us in operationally?
Sure, so through your worship, a number of these are typical year over year. As you're aware, we've made some changes with our Parks program, and so, really, we can, we can work with the group. I don't know that mowing is something we would, we would be doing in that area, and there's some other concerns as we get into the spring with the trail, but in the past, we've really just worked with the group to kind of figure out what that route looks like, and to try and accommodate, accommodate the event. As far as barricades, similarly, we've been moving groups towards picking barricades up where we've left them in strategic locations, and they've been responsible for moving them around and setting them up, so that, that's kind of been the direction here over the last year, so definitely work with the group, we may not be able to do everything, but we can, we can accommodate them and support them.
So the letter of endorsement, so that's just simply that we're going to, we're going to support the event, and signing the permit issued by the Department for the host community?
Yeah.
Is that, we?
Yeah, it's a road closure, so through your worship, there's a process for that, and I don't see any concerns as far as the date, and any of those concerns, Kevin with the closure, and Ross with the facility?
So, okay, council needs to just simply endorse them, that we're going to support the event, and that we direct administration to work with them to provide the support where feasible.
So move.
Counselor Earl? Second, Counselor Lextrum, discussion?
Are you running in it?
I'm going to, I'm going to, I've got a side-by-side, and so I'm going to use that as my bicycle event, and if I can get my ski boat into the pool, I'll be taking part in the pool, actually. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. And so if we can take a five-minute break, Brenda?
Excuse me, through your worship, we should have a motion in regards to the letter from Fort St. John in regards to the High on Ice, just to receive it.
Okay. So just that we receive it for information, and we'll direct them, okay. Counselor Earl?
I move.
Second, Counselor Kemp? All in favor? Opposed? Carry. So if we can take a five-minute break, and we'll get that letter from the RD, and then we'll bring back.
I have to hear RD by the directors there, which I would have supported, I'd give support, because you're also like feeling the strength of the letter by all of us signing it, by, as mayors of our respective communities, and so that's why, for me, I want it back to me. I feel, exactly, we want to get the letter out this week. Counselor Lextrum?
Your worship, at this time, I would move that our council support this letter going forward under the city's letterhead, I believe, is what we're going to look for, is it duplication, or are we signing?
They're asking us to all sign the letter as?
As, oh, okay, terrific. I would so move.
Thank you. Second, Counselor Wilber? Discussion?
All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Now, the other piece that is that I think we should be, and I may come very quickly behind this, is depending on the next steps and what response we get, then I think we need to, I need to bring back to council our, our involvement in the leaders table, and me as the mayor of the City of Dawson Creek, actually, I'm representing, I'm, as the mayor of Dawson Creek, I was invited, but I represent you guys at that table, in my view, and so depending on the response we get from this, may, I may seek your direction in terms of what your views are, and us continuing to be a call for them.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And that concludes Mayor's Business. Diary?
Nothing to update, your worship?
Consent calendar, we have two or three letters, motion to receive consent. Counselor Wilber? Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carry? Next, the strategic priorities?
Nothing to update, your worship?
One thing that I was actually kind of having a look at, the document a few weeks ago, and perhaps in, at some point in the first quarter, we should get through our budget a little closer, is to maybe set a timeframe aside for council to get together to have some, that strategic discussion, revalidating and looking at some of the aspects of our strategic priorities that we've set, and just have that planning discussion, but I think it would be worthwhile for us to begin for 2020. And so we'll put that just for you guys, and hopefully find that date in the first quarter, and we'll make sure we get deeper into our budget, so we don't overwhelm our staff. But I do think it's worthwhile for us to do that.
So through your worship, as, as we move through the, the strap priorities, in particular, transit is one where we'll be implementing that communication plan in the new year, and so council will have to consider what replaces it, if that's still the general direction.
Good. Thank you. Media questions?
Nope. There you go. And we'll now go to our committee of the hall, and our RCMP are not here yet, but we'll be bringing two guests with us today, and so maybe we can move for our corporate officer. Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Why, thank you. I just wanted to focus on one item this morning, just to get some discussion going in regards to the grants policy. I have a few notes here that I'll go over, and then if I could just get some discussion on council, just so I can see how you want me to move forward with this. So the city hasn't had a separate grants policy since 2016, that's when the user fees and charges policy was adopted. Smaller requests, such as reduced rate for ice rentals, have been accommodated through the various levels provided in the user fees and charges policy, and the larger requests have been dealt with on an ad hoc basis, and have not required any formal application or reporting process. The policy that's being considered by, by myself will require all applicants to provide information regarding their project funding needs, and will also consider if the applicant is receiving any other assistance, like from sub-tax exemptions. And larger events that bring visitors into the community will be referred to Tourism Dawson Creek, and if additional funding is warranted, they would recommend, they would bring a recommendation back to council for consideration. This extra step would delay the approval process, and so I'm looking for council's direction on that option as well. If directed by council, the Finance Department will develop two types of application forms, one for smaller requests that just require basic information, and one for larger requests that require a project budget and a financial statement from the organization. Both, both types of applications will require a final report, and that needs to be provided before any future requests would be considered. And the discussion I would like to hear from council is whether or not a grants policy should be provided for consideration, or if council wishes to continue approving requests on the ad hoc basis.
Thank you, Brenda. Counselor Wilber?
I, thank you, Brenda, for that, and I actually like the idea of having some form of application, but also having that follow-up afterwards, we, you have to do it for the regional district, you have to do it for NDIS, so it does change it, but I think also it's just a matter of getting those groups that are asking for stuff used to, this is the process, and this is the timeline. I didn't like the way we had it before, where it was based on one-year sports and one-year arts and culture, I think it should just be open, but I do like the idea of people making application, and then also reporting back on how their event went and how they used the funding.
Thank you. Counselor Perzel?
I think, to my impression from council, particularly the previous councils, is that we need to distinguish between sponsorship and grants. I think, I believe council should have the ability to sponsor certain special events. Grants, my handle on grants might be different than others, but my, my understanding of a grant would be, it is a, something, to help something get started in the community. It's like a startup. I think the trap that happens is that we have certain organizations who repeatedly ask for grants. That shouldn't be the case. I'm quite in favor of groups repeatedly asking for sponsorship, such as, let's say, the Beef Congress, you know, that's, that occurs every, let's say, occurs every two years, and we sponsor, sponsor, I'm very comfortable with that. So, the question is, or maybe the suggestion is, that we should clearly have a policy around sponsorship, separate from grants, and define what we, why we have grants.
Good point. Counselor Earl?
Thank you, worship. So the Canadian Revenue Agency does distinguish between donations and sponsorships. Donation, you're getting a tax receipt, and the person asking for donation can't promise you any kind of assets in return for that, above and beyond earned, at earned marketing, like they get an article in the newspaper with your picture. Sponsorship is, for all intents and purposes, a, you're buying advertising, they're promising you assets in return for money, and you should be getting an invoice with GST, or that is what it should be. Now, in our region, especially when you're dealing with small nonprofits, sometimes they don't always make that distinction, but that is the legal distinction with respect to a grant. I think it's more akin to a donation than a sponsorship, but that would be the distinction you'd make. So if you get an invoice with GST, you're buying sponsorship, there are assets that you are entitled to, or you're buying essentially a license that you can put your logo on. And I mean, from a nonprofit's perspective, it all goes into the same pot of money anyway, whether it's a sponsorship or a donation, it just, yeah. So that's, from my experience at the event center and what I do at the credit union, that's the distinction we work with.
Thank you. Counselor Lextrum?
Thanks, your worship, and just looking at this policy is, is you work towards, I guess, refining it. I'm thinking back many, many years, with the attempt at the city where we put in a, you must apply by this date, our grants fund is set, here's what we've got in our budget. To be quite honest, that, it didn't work real effectively. I do think we want to try and put in something that allows council to give consideration to a grant or a sponsorship request based on the budgeted amount, and not based on who gets through the door first. So maybe we might want to look at some dates, you can apply by this date or this date, if we put two throughout the year, but failing that, it would be, I guess, up to council to waive the policy if they didn't meet that timeframe. It makes it far more difficult, I think, if we're one-offing them, one this month, one next month, we don't know where the budget, you know, is at, what's left, but just for consideration, I throw it in.
Counselor Earl?
So through my work at the credit union, we do what's called the Community Social Responsibility Fund, which is, we do two intakes a year, and we do have parameters we need by, but in my experience, because the funds are, I administer the program, but I don't vote on who gets the funds, that's done by a committee mixture of board members and employees, and we do have, I guess, parameters, but there are always organizations that fall outside of them, you know, and the committee likes to have the latitude to do that, so they essentially get it sent, and it either gets shortlisted or not, and then we go from there. And one thing I've found in the timing, I don't know, we've been doing it for about two years now, but once you get local nonprofits trained, for, for lack of a better term, with respect to the timelines and the due dates, they tend to pick it up fairly quickly, and they talk amongst themselves, so.
Thank you. I, looking at 2019, and I think, I think honestly, we've, how we've managed the grants and sponsorships over the last number of years, I think we've really seen, trying to put that structure into it, but I, I agree with Counselor Perzel's point about that sponsorship, and when you look at the Peace Country Beef Congress as an example this year, they put on an annual event every year, and if they're looking for that support from the community organization, like the business community and others, to be able to help put that on, and they make the request for the city, it isn't a grant they're looking for, it's an annual sponsorship for an event, and then we look at it from the perspective of, in my view, anyway, that event and sport tourism kind of model, because that is what it's doing, it's bringing people in, and so it's not a grant, in my view, that I think about grants. I really do, though, believe that we need to have that flexibility within the grants, where people have the opportunity to apply, and the 2020 Games this year, where they're going to host now, we're going to support and help support the 2020 Games with the City of Fort St. John for the skiing, and all of a sudden, now they're looking for some, it's a unique one-time opportunity that's created, and so they're saying, we need twenty-five-hundred dollars worth of swim passes for those, so that's a grant, to me, specifically, that's going to be a one-time. And the Remembrance Day this year, where the Legion, and they, they're in a spot, because now they need to rent, so, to me, I, I think that flexibility that we have to have in order to be able to help support and, and participate in things that we see as a value to our community, is an absolute grant, and usually looked upon as a one-time, and I love the opportunity that then that gives us on behalf of our residents to help provide that support to those organizations. And, so I like the idea of, and I, I think it's very good what you've done, and I, but I do see that difference, as Counselor Perzel has indicated, that difference between a sponsorship that's ongoing, kind of an event sometimes, and, and an actual grant, so. Further input, further comments, questions? Brenda?
Oh, thanks, thanks for the input, I will take that into consideration, and hopefully bring something forward that council can approve in January.
We work so well together, eh? It's Christmas. Also not my sharp, also not my sharpest today. Anything further, Brenda?
That's all I have, unless there's any other questions.
Any other questions?
Well, I would like to add voice to what Mayor was saying, because I, I know people from the past, when we had days, and they missed it, so I think maybe just two intakes a year is maybe insufficient, too. What about quarterly? And we have a budget, let's say we had a budget of twenty thousand, people can apply as five thousand available in the first quarter for application, because some people are very on top of this, and I don't want others that are less on top of it, or new to miss out, so I like the idea of some proportion.
Duncan?
So through your worship, just in a little bit of context, this came forward through the previous council, and was really geared, we started seeing a bit of a swing in the types of applications we were getting, right? We went from kind of events within our community, to teams and groups that were traveling with, you know, outside of the community, and that's where some requirement for definition and sponsorship slash grant, that's where that came in. So the focus has been primarily on, okay, if this is event tourism, what does that look like, and if people are leaving the community, is that still eligible? There is and has been some discussion around kind of timelines, but really, primary focus- is and has been some discussion around kind of timelines, but really primary focus has been on, you know, what does that look like and what kind of information does council want to see before they approve it? And is that, you know, budgets and, and things like that. So, that's all been taken into consideration, but a lot of time and emphasis is on the types of funding and the types of events or requests.
Thank you. And that's a good recollection. Counselor Wilber?
Well, no, I, and when I read this, I looked at it as sponsorship and grants separately. I didn't think the two were together, but I think there's sponsorship that we do for bigger events, but then there's also smaller events that people could apply for, right? And maybe that falls under the, the grant that we're going to grant for, right? So, that's why I like having the application to apply for it, but I also like to have that reporting back to us. So, we know that it was used effectively within the community, right? We see the result because we could have the same people asking over and over again, but really never know what the result was of their events. That's why I like that reporting back piece, because there have been events in the community where the communities come together, supported it, and then you, you don't hear back from them or there's no follow-through. So, that, that's really, from my perspective, is just having that reporting back. But I think sponsorship is those bigger pieces in the community where grants are smaller, but there's still community events, but they're just smaller amounts. So, that would fall under grant application.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Brenda.
You're welcome.
No, I see Staff Sergeant has entered the building. Good to have you here this morning. And Marie is here and welcome. So, I want to introduce, and so you're welcome to come to the delegation table and Marie, if you'd like to join them. And so, I want to, so, she's not, she's not big on this today, but I, I gotta, I gotta tell the story of, of how this and why this is. So, this, earlier this year, Damon, the interagency group, or was it last year?
Uh, it was about this time last year.
So, Damon brought forward the concept of forming this interagency committee and the interagency group where all of the groups and the organizations in our community that are working together should be meeting on at least a quarterly basis. And, and we started, he started pulling us all together. And so, it's Northern Health, it's the Event Center, it's Conservation, it's the RCMP, it's the Police, Emergency Services, Ambulance, the City, on and on and on, in terms of just us getting together in the community so we know who each other are, who the contacts are, what some of the roles we play in it. Each quarter, we have a meeting and the Chair of the Committee is rotated around is the intent. And so, whoever's chairing the meeting then would organize the agenda as well as the presentation for that particular meeting. And so, we hosted it, the last meeting or the meeting before, and we had our bylaw enforcement there and I arranged to have Trish from the PRRD come and talk about emergency planning and all of that stuff. I just think it's a really effective way for us in the community to understand who and what those services and the work that are being provided in the community and the region on behalf of us all and who the people are so that we can ensure that we have that contact. And so, Northern Health and Kendra has entered the building, thank you. And so, as Kendra and Marie would be coming to the meetings, I got to be introduced to Marie. And Marie is, providing this amazing service in our community that was unknown to me. And so, I really thought in partnership with Damon today and the Committee of the Whole, and so it's not about the specifics of the services, but the overall, what they're doing and how they're touching our community and the residents in our community and a specific demographics. And so, for Marie and Kendra, that was why I thought it would be so helpful for council to just get a little bit of a touch on what you're doing in our community on behalf of that population that has such a huge need for that service. And so, that's what I was hoping to get from you guys today as part of Damon's presentation, who is under the Committee of the Whole process, gives a presentation on the RCMP. So, you need to come to the table. And Damon, and join Damon. And Damon, you guys can do this collaboratively together. And so Kendra's staying back.
Kendra scooted in last so she could stay back.
And so, this is Maria and she's a community nurse.
I'm a registered psychiatric nurse, yep. And I'm the team lead for the Intensive Case Management Program, which is a new program that came about in January, February. So, we got funding through the opiate crisis in B C to start a new program to focus our attention on those people that live in the community with addictions issues, substance use issues, most of them severe. And of course, that population has a huge homelessness issue as well. So, that kind of, that's, I think that's why we were kind of invited to this table, because we were talking about the homeless population in Dawson Creek and how we can help them out and support them. So, our program consists of nurses, life skills workers and some addiction specialists. And we go into the community and we deal with the folks that are out there struggling for different issues that aren't usually connected anywhere else. They're not always well received with other programs necessarily because of their lifestyle. So, we go out and we find them. We hand out harm reduction supplies. We try to get them connected with doctors in town. We try to just give them basic support. We bring them a sandwich if we have one. We've provided winter boots, lots this winter, stuff like that. The nursing piece is largely focused on the emergency department. So, we have a psychiatric liaison nurse that spends a lot of their time in a merge.
Which Kendra knows.
Because a lot of these folks come into emergency, they don't have anywhere to sleep, they don't have any food, sometimes they're withdrawing from drugs and alcohol and they need some support. So, they'll come into a merge and we step in and try to create relationships with them so that when they leave the hospital, then we can have some connections with them.
So, when we had bylaw enforcement and we had a presentation by Sean and a little bit of a, and we were talking about the homelessness issue and people living under the bridge and in our parks and tents and Marie, I know we're aware of them and we're working with them. And it was amazing to me that that service is being provided and incredibly so. And so, I thought it was worthwhile for council to just get a, a touch of that because it is something that is ongoing in our community and needs that support and needs that work. And it's easy for us to sit up here in the second floor and lose sight of that. And so, I thought it was really helpful for us to have Marie and Damon come and do a little bit of an update on that for us today as a part of the Committee of the Whole meeting. And so, we really appreciate you coming today and, and giving us that update. And certainly I'd ask council any questions for Marie. Counselor Lex?
Thanks your worship. Thanks Marie for the work you're doing. A quick question, you talked about you go out and you engage the people in the community if they need boots, winter boots, winter coats. How do you get that stuff? How do, is it a reach out?
We don't have any funding for it. So, staff have donated their own boots. We also use Networks quite a bit.
Okay.
Yeah. Jackie at Networks has been very helpful, very helpful. We utilize a Salvation Army when we can, but lots of times they don't even have that kind of stuff because their demand's so high as well. So, it's donations.
Okay. So, if a person wanted to donate to the work you're doing, how would they go about it?
We're located on the psychiatric unit in the hospital. So, we've had people come in with bags of winter coats and say, can you guys use these? And we wash them up and we store them.
All right.
And we bring them around. We have a car that's out every day. You'll see the little white car driving out with I C M T on the side, that's us.
Okay.
And so, we're out handing out winter boots, coats, mits, Boost, we hand out Ensure, milkshakes for those that need it and stuff like that. So, you've probably seen us around, you just don't know that it's us.
And what touched me was these guys are doing this out of their own pocket lots of times.
Yeah, we don't have any funding in particular for the food and stuff that we hand out. So, a lot of these guys that we run into, and women, they haven't eaten for a few days. So, we try to scrounge up what food we can to hand out, and what's like, stuff like trail mix, granola bars, bottles of water, Ensure, stuff like that. So, we, I mean, I finagle a little bit of money out of our budget, but yeah, we could always use more.
Thank you. Thank you. Morning Damon.
Good morning, your worship. Counselors. And just on I C M T, they're, they're invaluable for us over the last year. So, it's, it's, we lean on them heavily to assist us with persons with substance abuse or mental health issues. And just the last year that they've been operating here in Dawson Creek, we've noticed a big difference. Speaking just of mental health calls, last year, you remember when I was speaking, you know, I told you that now health calls have climbed by 200% and it was unsustainable for us. We just couldn't be sitting with these patients, because that's what they are, they're on criminals. Couldn't be sitting with these patients for hours at the hospital waiting for doctor assessments. And I C M T now is right on board. They meet us at the hospital, they take care of these patients right away and they get us back to the room. So, that's just one thing that they do to help us. And, but we, we lean on them very heavily now. And it's kind of what we looked at bringing the interagency committee together in the first place was, a lot of the issues that are happening in Dawson Creek aren't necessarily a policing issue, but they have a policing element to them because we're involved at some stage. But it's about bringing everybody to the same table to talk about the issues and see people work together as a community to resolve them. So, you had mentioned the last meeting, bylaw had made a presentation on homelessness in Dawson Creek. Before that meeting, I had no idea that we had homelessness issues in Dawson Creek because we don't see that. And in preparing for today's meeting, I wanted to tell you kind of how homelessness is affecting policing in Dawson Creek. And the answer really is that it's not. So, I reviewed all the files for 2019 and are the calls that we're getting related to persons that are homeless in Dawson Creek, direct calls, we can only find 20 calls of persons that were homeless in Dawson Creek. So, that's people that maybe have slept in the bank, theft and guilt overnight, or they are sleeping in vehicles overnight and people will call us and let us know and we go deal with that. So, for the last year of 2019, we've only had 20 calls of persons being homeless, direct calls. That's not to say that's around getting indirect calls of people breaking into cars or the petty thefts and the break in enters. And perhaps these people are, are, are trying to generate some money and, and getting involved in these petty crimes. I don't, I can't tell you how many, how many indirect calls we're getting relating to homeless people in Dawson Creek, but directly, we've only had 20 calls. So, the homelessness issue in Dawson Creek is necessarily a policing issue because it's not really getting a lot of calls for service. That's not to say it's not a community issue though. And I'll be clear in saying that I support any actions to address the issue of homelessness in Dawson Creek. And because it's not a policing issue, doesn't mean I don't want to be involved and engaged all in Dawson Creek or simply able to provide any support and assistance we can to address that issue. And that includes working with our partners like I C M T, so. Before I get into my policing report, I'll just continue a little bit here with this, with the homelessness issue, because I did a little bit of research and wanted to provide you with some information. So, I really had to go and I talked to a lot of my members to kind of get their perspective on it. And based on their interactions and communications with people that are homeless in, in Dawson Creek, the following determinations can be made. Most, if not all of them, have some kind of substance abuse or addiction concerns, while a lot of them also have mental health concerns. We have interacted with a few people that actually live out of their vehicle in Dawson Creek, including one person that was living out of the clothing donation box, living over by warrant. So, she's not anymore, but she was throughout the summer. Many times, these people have informed us that they have no other place to go. So, they live with known criminals and drug dealers in town and they become involved in crime to pay for a bed in the house. And, and in doing so, they're, because they're, the, the environment that they're in, they become further addicted to illicit drugs. It's kind of a yin and yang thing where they have no choice but to be in this house and in that environment. And in doing so, become more involved in drugs and crime. They informed us directly that it's very hard to detox in Dawson Creek because they just don't have a safe place to do that. We deal primarily with two shelters in town. This is the Transition House, or other always referred to as the T House, primarily for women, and the Aspen Court, which is primarily for men. I can speak too much on those shelters and what they offer because that's, I don't want to speak out of turn. But in our experience, both those shelters have no drinking and no drug use policies. And as I just informed you, most of the people that are homeless in B C or in Dawson Creek have substance abuse issues. So, they're usually, or they can be intoxicated, which prohibits us from taking them to those homes or those shelters. Is there any questions on that before I go to the policing report?
Thank you.
So, our report is fairly short this, this month. It covers the period of November for 2019. I told you last report that I was going to report to you moving forward our policing plan priorities because I want you to know where we are and how we're doing on them. So, we have three operational priorities that we identified at the beginning of the year, those being property crime, organized crime and mental health. We had a fourth priority, which was tagged as organizational excellence. That's more of an internal priority to hold myself accountable to my staff. I'm not going to report on that. I'll just report on the operational priorities. The first being property crime. So, we had set goals at the beginning of the year, remembering that I operate on the fiscal year. We had set goals to decrease break in enters in Dawson Creek and the area by eight to 10% and to decrease vehicle theft by eight to 10%. To date, our results, our break in enters have decreased by 18% compared to last year. And our vehicle thefts have decreased by 26%. So, we're on board. Organized crime, our goal at the beginning of the year was to increase our breach charges by 10 to 15%. So, we wanted to hold the criminals accountable, make sure they're following their conditions. Results to date are increased, our breach charges have increased by 36%, so significantly higher than where we had set our target. Mental health calls was our third priority that we had set and our goal was to decrease mental health calls by 10 to 15%. Their results to date is unchanged, we're relatively at the same amount, we're still getting the same amount of mental health calls. And looking back, perhaps that was a lofty goal because they can't change the amount of people that have mental illness in Dawson Creek, they can't. That said, over the last year, like I mentioned with I C M T, our officer time commitment to these calls has been drastically reduced. So, we're no longer seeing at the hospital with these patients. I C M T is engaged right away in taking them over to custody of the patients at the hospital. So, I look at it as a plus still. A quick update on our resources for the month of November. We've had no transfers in November. We have no hard vacancies and we actually still are plus one surplus to establish remain while we're waiting for a member to settle their home. At present, we have 10 soft vacancies. It's a lot, that's a big number. It's high. I know you don't like seeing that. It's a little bit of a perfect storm right now where we've had a couple of people hurt and injured, but they're coming back right away. So, in the next two weeks before the end of the year, I'm going to have three back on the road and I'll have some more back in January. So, this is probably the worst you're going to see it here and it's going to be better moving forward. I did just get notified today as well, we have three new recruits coming in February. So, that includes our additional two to our provincial establishment. So, it increases our whole establishment by two members. So, there are going to be boots on the ground here in February. Crime trends, we've, we're at a total as of November 30th of 8,681 calls this year to date. 79% of those calls are in the city, 21% in the rural. And that's pretty much standard every month, I think, when I report to you. There's nothing really, or pardon me, city, we've had relatively the same amount of calls for services last year. So, when compared to last year, the same amount of calls. Rural, we've seen a reduction in calls for service by about 7%. Nothing really of note worth mentioning in our crime trends, but the only real increase of significance I will mention is our impaired driving calls. Over the last month, we've seen an increase of 85% in calls for impaired driving. It's that time of the year. And also, we're seeing our officers on the road a little bit more conducting proactive traffic stops, knowing that it's that time of the year for Christmas parties. So, we're going to see those impaired calls keep coming up. In closing, I wasn't going to mention this anymore, but we'll bring it up, the Spot Initiative. So, if you remember, we were putting those spots, you are spotted signs in the windshield. That was intended to be a one-time thing, just to kind of get some word out in town to start locking your vehicles and your houses up. But we've been getting quite a bit of positive feedback on it. And we're also in the process right now of working with the citizens on patrol to be perhaps handle those notices on our behalf to vehicles that are left unsecured. So, citizens on patrol is doing patrols in Dawson Creek. They're out anyways and they're in the process of checking vehicles, I guess. So, we're, we're going to see if they may, perhaps they can take over that Spot Initiative and handle the notices on our behalf. So, that may be ongoing. And the last thing I'll mention is that we did a fraud prevention presentation in November. It was provided by Constable Lisa Bennett from our G I S unit. It was given to the R B C clients and staff. They invited us to do it. So, we were happy to do that. And it was very well received. So, pending any questions, that completes my police report for you today.
Thank you Damon. Any questions? Counselor? Counselor Parzal?
Damon, I was surprised to read how little the bait cars in, in service. Did you get a lemon up here or what's the problem?
We had two lemons actually. So, we, we had a great bait car and it was getting hit or activated often. And we, once it gets activated so much, we, we have to switch it out to, because people know that it's a bait car. And the vehicle we got never worked. We had it for two or three months and we couldn't get it to work. So, we switched out for another vehicle, which we've got here now. And it's been up and down. We've had some problems. So, that's Impact B C. They run the bait car program. We were, we were just talking about it today, actually, about switching this vehicle out now to get one that actually is working again. So, we, we have, we have had some issues, technical issues with the bait car, so.
Well, they'll have one functioning this year.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. It's out right now. So, it's working right now. So.
What color is it?
Any other questions for Damon? Damon, thank you so much. I really appreciate you coming in this morning and giving us an update. And also to Marie and Kendra, thank you guys for joining us today. Honestly, the interagency meetings to me and the group has been a really valuable bit of work. I really appreciate you taking the initiative to get that. I really appreciate you taking the initiative to get that started because it's been very worthwhile. And to, obviously, to Marie and Kendra, the work you guys do. And one question, so that I think would be worthwhile for us, is the funding for the program that you guys are running, is that through Northern Health? Is it through the Ministry of Health? Is it, is that who's funding it?
The Ministry of Health.
Yeah? And so I think it would be really worthwhile for us, obviously, seeing the benefits of the work that you guys are doing, the impacting to our, not only the social side, but of services too, that desperately needed residents in our community, but also the financial impact to our RCMP in terms of not having to spend that time. It would be really worthwhile, in my view, for us to send a letter to Northern Health and to the Minister of Health, indicating how strongly we support it, we're seeing the benefits of it, and I think we should do that on behalf of council, but I'll bring that forward at the upcoming meeting. Thank you so much. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, sir.
Ladies, thank you so much. Do you have any, do you guys want to have any more time at the delegation table, or are you, do you have any more to add?
Kendra's just like, no.
Merry Christmas, you guys. Thank you. We've got time, if you want to. 14-3, we have a report from the General Manager of Community Services. Good morning, Ross.
Good morning, Your Worship, members of council. This morning, I'll report out on both the fire department and our safety departments within the division. As council knows, Deputy Fulton has stepped up into the acting chief role in the fire department. I've been working with him on corporate processes, policy procedures, what have you, and happy to report this morning that I believe the department is functioning as it should and firing on all cylinders. Our fire department has hosted a couple of, you've got the meetings and other events there, but we had 19 local government staff members attend an Emergency Operations Center finance course, and I believe that took back, it took place earlier back in November. And they've also at the Fire Training Center, hosted a live fire certification weekend. So we're starting to use that facility a little bit more. I know Chief Fulton has done a fair amount of work out at the training center, and we're getting that used more and more as we speak, trying to concentrate a little bit more on marketing and bringing other departments in to take advantage of that center, as well as training our own staff. City of Dawson Creek hosted the flu shot vaccination, Safeway hosted that on our, for us, we had a pharmacist come in, and I believe 20 of our staff took advantage of that opportunity. They were hosted October 29th and November 8th. Council is aware, we're pursuing through WorkSafe BC, a certificate of recognition for occupational health and safety. To that effect, prior to having the, our audit conducted, one of the requirements of the BC Municipal Safety Association is to have an internal auditor within our staff. So our safety officer, Yinka, is currently conducting some work and has to conduct a safety audit at our Public Works Department, so he is part of his training to become that officer for us. He's been conducting some interviews and interviewing staff and processes and policies at the Public Works Department, and I'm optimistic that he's going to pass that piece. They will take that information, and it does get reported back to WorkSafe and to our own people, and it's a good opportunity to kind of reflect and see what we're doing and see how efficient we are being and how safe things are going in that particular department. You do have before you some information on WorkSafe premiums. Happy to report that the city of Dawson Creek has been, our rates have been reducing in recent years. Across the province, we're in our particular category with municipalities, they are finding that they have an increase in incidents, they've had an increase in fire department deaths, so the rate overall in the province has been going up, and the premiums of going have been going up accordingly. We seem to be bucking that trend and reducing from our own perspective here. And I'll just close out with a bit of good news. As part of our own operational strategies, we do conduct a number of building condition assessments in our facilities on an annual basis. It helps us inform our capital budgets and repairs and maintenance that is ongoing in a number of our facilities. We went out in October this year, we advertised a request for a proposal to do, to undertake a condition assessment at the Dawson Creek Art Gallery, the Railway Museum, where the visitor center is, and also three of our airport facilities. We had identified a budget of $40,000 for that work. We were happy, we actually received nine bids to come in and conduct that work for us. The bids ranged from $71,000 to $22,000, so we actually engaged a company by the name of Specialized Property Evaluation Services, or SPECS, to conduct that work for us. They're, I believe they were actually originally supposed to come in this week and do the work, and we postponed that a little bit now, just with people starting to move around for Christmas and what have you. But good news story, we're going to save some money there, so. Short and sweet this morning, I hope you answered any questions.
Great. Thank you, Ross. Questions? Councilor Lechter?
You know what, just, I mean, a comment, I know, I think I can speak on behalf of everybody on council, is, Ross, to you and to the staff and Duncan, I mean, the work that's being done to see those rates on WorkSafe BC go down speaks to our safety culture, speaks to all of that, so a huge thank you to yourselves and to the staff and to all the workers of the cities.
Great job. Councilor Earl?
Similarly, just a comment, pass on to you and your staff with respect to the hockey tournament. I know you guys are very involved, many doing dual roles as employees and volunteers and a bit of everything, and obviously, Aaron, who, you know, had the worst task of trying to organize me, Amy and Shaylee.
Hey, man, I've done it before, it's not my first rodeo.
But just please extend, and I hope I speak on behalf of the rest of council, but I said, please extend our compliments to them for their work in that. It's a logistical monster, and they pulled it off, made it look, well, I could say easy, but they made it look, it ran very, very smoothly, so thank you for that.
Thank you very much for that, and I can also, I wasn't involved as many of my team members were, but I can attest there was a lot of work going on, so very well-oiled machine there.
But we're going to add Chelsea and Reed and Shantae to that list as well.
Yes, for sure.
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you, Ross.
Thank you.
And next, we have Team White East. Team in second.
Hey. You would have asked them at the beginning of the tournament if they'd be happy playing for gold, I think they would have been thrilled.
I'm adopting Team East goalie. He's going to come and live in my house for as long as he wants. Morning, Kevin.
Good morning. Just on that, a great bunch of individuals got to meet and be around over the last 10 days from Eastern Canada. Some really nice people. I'm always amazed at just how respectful and polite the individuals are and just how grateful they are as, you know, for coming to Dawson Creek and the hospitality that they receive. So that was something that they certainly did mention, that they, even though that it was a tough loss yesterday, I had a few individuals tell me it'll be an experience that they'll never forget, so it looks like we left our mark on them, so that's great. Just a couple of quick things. Under the building end of things, as I'm sure everybody sees, our hotel over here is kind of in full swing, they're working away on the foundations and stuff, so that's great news after a bit of a slower start. So things are moving, and that's, that's great. Burger King opened up, that's great to see, so we've got some things happening. A couple of other things I wanted to touch on in the report. Under the water and environmental side, we had a tender that came through council earlier this year for some work within the plant, and it was some sister booster piping and upgrades. Anyways, the contractor was out of Prince George, and I remember there being some questions at the time about whether we knew the individuals, and, because we hadn't worked with them. And so we, you know, we had done references and we'd heard great things, and I'm happy to report that they were even better than their references, so it was just a great, you know, we expected two or three weeks worth of work in the plant, they came in, they rattled it off in five days, in and out, and Devin was very pleased. So I just wanted to kind of make that note, that central interior piping and maintenance out of Prince George came in, did a great job for us, project went smooth. So it's always nice to see when you have some thing like that come along. Another interesting fact is, I was looking at the wastewater monthly flows, and we had that snow in November, and then we had that really warm weather following that snow, and you'll see our flows at the outfall are actually higher than our spring flows during our spring melt. So it just speaks to just the weird weather patterns that we're seeing, and so we had significant moisture, and then we had that warm weather, and we had a lot of runoff. And for second, third week in November, that is somewhat unique. At the last council committee of the whole, there was a question around our new water meters that are going in, so I did provide some information on that, and also a graph that kind of speaks to what these new water meters will do for us. And it's just a great piece of technology. Where in the past, we've had individuals come in, and, you know, they may have been gone for two or three weeks, and if they've had a small leak, that can add up to be a lot of money for an individual, and maybe they don't even know where it's occurring, or even if it is, you know, the first assumption is that there's usually a problem with the meter, and then we have to go and verify it. With this new technology, we're very, it's very easy to see whether there is an anomaly or a leak or something going on out of the ordinary. And in this example we provided you, you can see the day-to-day usage along the bottom is very small, and then all of a sudden, for a period of three or four days, they had very significant usage, and so we were able to pinpoint that. And that's, that's great technology that we now have in our hands. And the last thing I was going to touch on is that I met with PRD staff regarding the joint planning area. They've been asking just kind of where we were at on that, so I went over, chatted with them, kind of got a sense of where they're at and what they're doing in other areas. And they're really just trying to establish their budgets for next year, and that was really the, they just wanted to know where we're at. Obviously, if council hasn't had any discussion on it, it's going to be tough to, to make any changes in the short term, but council's always got that opportunity at any point to make changes to that regional planning area. It's just whether, for 2020, whether you'll be able to realize any savings if you do decide to make any changes. So I did bring some maps over from the RD, I have them in my office, I can certainly leave them out if council wants to look at, just to provide some perspective on the areas and go from there.
Thank you, Kevin. Any questions? Any questions? Councilor Earl, Councilor Lechter?
Thank you, Your Worship. Thanks, Kevin. Just a question with respect to the new water meters. What, if any, access would a resident have to their detailed water usage? I'm just thinking, ever since Hydro installed the smart meters, you can access those online, or I think in some instances, they'll send it off to you. But I understand we're not the size of Hydro and beyond our capabilities technically, but I know, even when I was at the event center, monitoring your down hours and the power usage and the pull that still comes from stuff that's, just curious if anybody wanted to look at their water usage and opportunities to reduce it, it strikes me, this would be a very valuable tool. And what ability do they have to access it?
Yeah. And obviously, I don't believe we have anything available on the website where you can go and drill into your own personal account. Could be corrected, but I'm sure that if the individual, if someone came to us and wanted to look into it, we could certainly get them that information and provide that.
Thank you. Councilor Lechter?
Thanks, Your Worship. Just a couple of things. You mentioned the PRRD and the planning area. I think it is our intent to try and find a resolve relatively quickly, so the savings are there for 2020, so we'll have to, at least that's my understanding, so we'll have to look, whether it's a fire protection area radius, whether it's a water ship, I mean, there's a number of options I would think we'll have to discuss, but I think our hope is that we can get this done relatively quickly and get it to the board for their budget deliberations, so. The other one I had, just a quick one, on strategic priorities under sidewalk 13th Street, 111 to 100, and as well as the 10th, substantially complete is how they're tagged there. What didn't get done on those sidewalks this year?
I think, and I'd have to double check, I think the landscaping did get completed, and if it did, I should have probably taken substantial off of it, but I think that was the only thing that was left outstanding, it was probably the hydro seating and this touch-up landscaping, but they're essentially done.
All right. As we move forward, I think, and we've had this discussion, Kevin, I mean, it would be nice knowing that if we're putting out a contract, that it is completed. Like, part of the bid, when bids come in, people bid, we go to the lowest bidder traditionally on behalf of the taxpayer, but maybe the second highest bidder would have completed the job in the timeframe we asked versus the low bidder not completing it. So I think we're going to have to have that discussion as a council. These ones may be complete, so I don't want to tag those two, as you said, but that's something we have to have a discussion about as council, that hopefully, we, you know, the stuff we put out for tender and the work we want done, we have a completion date, and I hope the contractors respect that.
And substantial completion in the, in the contract world relates to outstanding amount of work, deficiencies and things like that, so it's terms used about, you know, how payments are made and whatnot, and like you say, the idea is, first, you're substantially complete, and then as they deal with deficiencies in a few last items, then they're complete, and you obviously want to see that completed in that calendar year and not drag into the next.
All right. Thanks.
Thanks. Kevin, I just wanted to follow up a couple of items. The flood planning, the work, is it nearing?
So where we're at with flood mitigation is, we should have a model where we can run some scenarios probably in January or early February, and that will enable us to look at the new flood plane, look at a few different options, and they'll be able to tell us where we can go from there, as far as if we were, example, if we were looking at a upgrade at a particular crossing, they could plug that in, run the scenarios, and tell us what the, you know, the outcomes of that would be.
Oh, great. Good deal. Awesome. The other thing, the task is on the raw water reservoir and the new one that's built, and so now we're into the full season, and I know, I'm assuming it's filling and we're gaining capacity within that. Operationally, is it working its way through and are still learning?
We're at 65 percent, so that's great. You know, we're, you know, when you look at our water usage in the community throughout the year, we're averaging 5, 6,000 cubes a day, so that usage is down, you know, historically over the last number of years, so that's enabling us to put more into that reservoir each and every day, so that's coming, coming along. There's going to be some, you know, learning processes on just how we operate that reservoir, and how much we draw it down, and how much, because you want that water to turn over, you don't want it to sit in there too long, so, you know, we'll be working on that as we go, but it's a very valuable asset for us.
And the, and the infrastructure of piping and opera flow and all that stuff has been working and doing its thing, and, oh, good.
Yeah, no issues.
And so just for people might be listening, 65 percent full, that's a million cubes?
Yeah.
So it's about 650,000 cubes of water and storage in there, just that one reservoir, which at 5,000 cubes a day would give us a lot of days.
Lots of water.
Again, I'm not my sharpest today.
Yeah, I mean, we'll have over 200 days when it's full, right? So we're at, yeah, 120 days. We're doing all right.
Great. On Monday, or sorry, on Friday, at Piece of a Regional District, we had a presentation by the Northern Rockies Regional Municipality, and they've implemented a recycling composting process at their landfill, and they're utilizing red wiggler worms. And so what they've done is they've taken on a pilot project where they're laying in cardboard, they're laying in organics, they're laying in materials. cardboard, they're laying in organics, they're laying in materials. And they've got a pilot process going where they're using these red wigglers to take on the composting of those materials. It's apparently on the early stages, it's, it's beaten the normal composting, natural composting timeframes by at least half. And they're composting now within, I think it's nine months to 14 or 15 months. So I obviously asked the question of our grass and yard clippings and yard waste. And the indication I got from them is this is, these things are amazing, what they're doing. And even in the wintertime, as long as they're protected within the cocoon of the composting material, snow gets on it, it's, they're, they're living through the winters, which they didn't know they would, they're, they're eating and digesting everything. And I, and I only raise it, Kevin, that I think, to me, and we've talked about the amount of work that we put into our yard waste, our yard grass clippings and things that get into that, and how much effort and time and some money we're putting into that, that that's something that I would really like us to be able to develop in the next, hopefully this year, along with the regional district, who I know are looking at it, from our perspective, to look at it from that perspective of that yard waste.
Okay. Yeah, I definitely could get some more information, bring it back to council at next committee of the whole, just on what, whether that will, what it would do for our program.
Yeah, absolutely. And they say that it's such a high-quality compost, it's some of the highest quality composts now being produced in the province, and some of the analytics they're getting from the province. And in fact, it's so high quality, you got to mix it like, you can only use about 25% of it with a normal dirt, because it's just such a high quality. And so I, like I say, to me, it's just not so much, and I know the RD are looking at it right now from that perspective of their, some of their opportunities. But I think it might be something for us, if we can find a way to leverage that into our yard waste and clippings, because I know from discussions with you, it's a, it's a big, it wouldn't seem like it's a big bit of work for us as a city to do, but it might be worthwhile for us to do that and maybe have them come and give a presentation.
And we've done some work on this, three worship, with Chelsea has done some work looking at the composting opportunities, so we can bring that back in the committee of the whole and bring that information.
Great. And the last piece, I just wanted to give you a little heads up. I got a call last week from a gentleman asking about intersection cameras, because he's indicating, and I know Counselor Lex raised it when the lights were out at 17th and Alaska, and saying like the people that are running red lights and crashing in our intersection. So I just got a little, for council, more than for Kevin, but the highest crash locations in Dawson Creek right now at intersections are 103rd and 8th Street at 14, with 14 crashes. And then 17th Street and Alaska Avenue at 13, and then 15th Street and Alaska at 7, and 10th and 102nd at 6. So our highest crash location incident, intersections are at those intersections controlled by traffic cam, or traffic lights. So anyway, I'm going to introduce a little bit of stuff on the side, answer those questions about it. But I thought it was really interesting to get that data from ICBC on that. Thanks, Kevin. Any other questions? Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Our airport manager is awake today, Duncan.
Yes, through your worship, I have a couple updates I can provide with your permission, your worship.
Okay.
So Rick is, he's ill today, was unable to come in. But a couple, couple of quick updates. So we are working on the drainage project right now. We did provide substantial completion on Friday. I did receive 75% invoice on Friday, which we will be processing and recommendation for payment. We will get that over to ACAP program. And our understanding is, if it wasn't Christmas, they could turn that around within a week or so. So we're going to get that over to them this week and hopefully receive that, that funding 75%, close to $2 million funding. So we are, we're moving forward, had a slight hiccup on that project. There was some infrastructure, depth was unknown, and we ended up having to move it, but it all fit within that operating budget, was approved by ACAP as part of that project, 100% funded. So good news, last piece of pipe has been put down as of last week, and just finishing up a little bit of compaction. There is a runway designation component with this as well. We were going to fund that individually, and ACAP included that into the project as well as part of that budget. So something else that, good news story, 100% funded again. I think we had budgeted 60,000 or something around that number for that project. So that's, that's good news.
We'll send them a Christmas card?
Yeah. We'll send them an invoice and a Christmas card.
Put the invoice in the Christmas card.
So really good news. And, and we're working with a contractor to expedite some of those invoices as the work gets completed, so that we can receive that funding early in the new year. Something else council has heard a lot about, and that's the de-icer. And so we are currently renting a de-icer. We got it out of Edmonton from, the name escapes me of the company that provided it. And you will see in our budget, some funding for a de-icer. And I don't know that it'll be a new de-icer, but it may be new to us, and we're just looking at our options right now. We have a preliminary number in there in the second draft of the budget, you'll see something a little more concrete. However, we are providing de-icing, and we do have that equipment at our airport. And other than that, Winnipeg Airport Society has been on the ground now here for, for about six months or more, and, and we're really moving through some operational changes, how we do our business, how we manage our staff. And we're also looking at revenue opportunities. Most recently today, approving some of that de-icing that we've never done in the past and have contracted out as a revenue opportunity. So they're looking at everything. There's been a significant amount of change, they're managing that change and that risk at the airport. And we look forward to the new year and seeing some of the savings or revenue as a result of that. On that note, they're also marketing the, the airport and advertising that airport, looking at new opportunities, most recently discussed, you know, potential helicopter company that has a contract in town, looking at stationing there and looking at some of those fuel sales. So lots of really good things happening at the airport, and definitely trending in the right direction.
We need to get on the diary, that contract to be extended for a year.
July 31st.
It's July, so we should get that on.
Or 10th.
Good. Thank you, Duncan. Counselor Parson.
So just a question here, reading the written report.
Okay.
No, it's just something that's, I think is very important. So I was reading the, under other information for council, medical evacuation flights, he reports the number. My question, and if it's not happening, it's a strong suggestion, do we track where these patients are coming from? In other words, city of Dawson, PRD, Tumler, Red, Jetwing. If not, I suggest we should do.
Yeah. So through your worship, we are, we are working very hard to find that information out. Unfortunately, we don't, we don't hold that information. It's often Northern Health or whoever is bringing the patients to the airport. And, and even getting the medical evacuation data is something we've worked very hard to get, because we don't always get that information depending on, on, you know, when it's happening. And we don't always know what the, the purpose of the flight is. We know it's coming in, and we know the type of plane, et cetera, but we don't always know the purpose. So we're working very hard to try and gather more data in those areas. Something else that we don't always get the information is when charters come in, and the, the number of people that are coming in on those charters. We know a plane's coming in, but they may not necessarily be using our terminal. So we're working really hard to capture some of that data, so that as we move forward with the airport and with council, we can provide you that information.
I have no doubt you've worked, you know, it just seems, just struck me, though, it's such valuable.
Yeah.
He's just like you did for the recreation use, you know, all that data.
The other thing I just was, I actually meant to ask this at the last time. So we're going to put up and do a dedication almost a little bit to Samside and those aircraft that are from Legion. Have we done that? And is there absolute dedication there, mentioning Samside as, with those paintings?
So I don't believe we have, your worship, because there was going to be a council event when we did that, and we haven't had that yet, so I'll follow up.
The other thing, his brother Al is in Grand Prairie, and I know Al is a longtime resident of Dawson Creek and real business person here. So when we get that organized, I wouldn't mind extending an invitation to Al and his family to let them know that we're doing this and have them hopefully join us in that day that we do a bit of a dedication to Sam. Okay. Thank you. Anything further?
That's all I have, thank you.
Great job. Thank you. So that's it for our committee of the whole. Anything else? Recession to close, and we'll take five minutes and go into closed. So got everybody? Thank you. So we'll call the special budget meeting of city council from Monday, December 16th to order. Our first item on the agenda today is our reports. We have report number 19187 from our chief financial officer with the 2020 draft one budget report. So at this time, I think if we could have a motion to receive for discussion. Counselor Wilbur, Counselor Kemp, all in favor? Opposed, carried, thank you. So with that, Flavia, perhaps we can turn it over to Duncan and Flavia to begin.
Welcome. Thank you. Good afternoon, and welcome to our first draft for 2020 budget. So this presentation here is, I grabbed some of the key charts that we have within the report, and we're going to walk through. We'll be discussing about some of the budget process, the general budget chart, which is kind of a summary of what was in and out in the preparation of draft one. A little discussion about the operational revenue, the 2020 property tax increase breakdown, alternative options for increase, and how this will impact the PRA capital allocation, which is one of council's initiative. The operational expenditure, a presentation of the capital projects, which is with, in detail in the budget binder that was provided. A discussion about water and sewer, a summary about debt servicing, our current accumulated surplus and reserve based on the draft one, and what are the key proposals for this draft one version. So for the budget process, it's just a summary, presenting the budget assumption, bring again, the first step, council approves budget schedules and the budget assumption. The second, there are constantly meetings through, through the year with budget, with the council, to go through the list of initiatives and what is taking consideration during the draft presentation. Staff also completed detail budget work, where we send documents to the managers, where they work through reviewing the figures and then presenting a revised number. We have various public meetings. In this case, we had also a survey, which we attached, on attachment, a, the results of the survey that we had, with 194 answers that we received. We have the formal public budget consultation, which is scheduled for February 10th, and final council directions on budget, and the final show plan by law, and property tax by law. Unfortunately, I thought this would be a little bigger. But yeah, so this here, on the report, it's a, it's a summary of all the money that's coming in and going out through operation, capital projects, and what you bring to the reserve. The good news about this draft one is based on the work that management put together, the beginning numbers, figures that we got as a result of some of council's initiative. We are able to bring a surplus in the accumulated reserve for operation and also for capital reserve. So when we go in detail about, it looks like the focus of this is not good, oh, is my eyes? I don't know, maybe it's my eyes. Yeah, so for operational revenue, this is a summary where we presented the key, our key operational revenue is the property tax, which is based on the draft one. It's expected to increase by 707, 8,000. And the main reason is the revised, the preview numbers we got from BC Assessment that was present in November, the impact on the rates, it's about 457,000 addition, which breaks down between market and non-market increase. But that's on the preview, not necessarily the completed whole rolls that we get at the end of December. Then we have, we have another 452,000, which is a result of the increase in meal rates. And this increase is based on what was agreed on the five-year plan last year. So from 2019 to 2023 financial plan that was approved on May 3rd, beginning of this year, we determined that we would increase in 2% all the classes, except for major industry, which was an expectation of 20% increase. And then I, I will discuss further about a contingency that I need to include there as part of those assessed values. And the breakdown about PRA, which right now, we are very, we are conservative in a way that last year, we received 15.2 million, but we are kept at 15.045 million, because we don't have the numbers until mid of January. So we drafted to, we will be able to know exactly how much grants we're going to be receiving from PRA. So just in a little, in the breakdown of classes, and I need, I can't see that one. If I can't see, I don't know if it's there. So this table here presented the revised March 2019, that was used for the 2019 budget per class, with the meal rate of 2019, and then the proposal meal rate for 2020 over the preview amount. So if we see the breakdown of increase, it's saying that increase due to non-market change, which BC Assessment gave to us on December 2nd, this breakdown, 87,000 is expected to be a result in total for non-market change, which are new inventory improvements, new buildings that were included for the 2020 new assessed value. And then the market change. Interesting enough, the market change for residents dropped in 155,000 in taxes. And this is because they revised the method of how they assess the residences. So they are, they informed us, and we also could on the preview report, that due to this method of assessment, that they are now checking for residences, you're going to see a significant drop. And however, on the other side, for commercial, they did the assessment, and they informed us, because of the market value, there is about 33 million increase in assessed value, which generates 495,000 just in taxes, new taxes under this market change. And for contingencies, because of the closure of air liquid, they also informed us, like, look, we don't have the final number yet until December, but we already know there are machines, equipments that they are moving. Therefore, this will affect the assessed value from the previous one that we gave to you. And because also, one of our major industries, because right now we have four, with air liquid coming out, we will have only three. And one of these three came a couple of months ago, and it stressed that they were concerned about the 20% increase that was happening this year and the increase that happened last year. So in my contingency, and that's going to be a council discussion, but I do reflect this, if there is a reduction of the 20% increase on the meal rate, I would be also reflecting on a contingency. So that's what I have created, 131,000 contingents.
So just before you move off of that, Flavia, if I can, the, we've discovered two years ago, I think, with the residential mill, with the residential assessment role, that there were different classifications within residential assessment that I certainly wasn't aware of. And it was, we saw this report that the average single-family home in Dawson Creek in 2019, I think, 18, went up by 2%. But yeah, we saw a $50 million drop in the overall assessed value of the role. And so it was, we, we learned then that there are different classifications of single-family within that overall assessment role. And the residential real estate that's an investment property like Strata, multifamily are different than single. property like Strata, multifamily are different than single-family and so that's where that differentiation come. And so that was good information and it'll be interesting to see and perhaps we'll have B C Assessment come to council at some point, once we get the final assessed role, to be able to have the conversation with them and just understand that, that assessment role because it is so important to us in our evaluation. We did hear from one of the properties about that. We did increase that major industry rate two years ago from $18, I think, 1,000 up to 27 and then another one this year. And we did hear from the industry, they were concerned about that. Not they weren't concerned about the first assessment, they're concerned about the second one. So I think council need to have that conversation about that when we get to that position. So you're saying you built a contingency into the heavy assessment of $131 in the event that council move it back to a different number?
Yes, that's, just because, so based on the draft one, which we are using 2% rate for all the classes and 20% for major industry, because I have these, the air liquid conditions that right now, I don't know exactly how much they will reduce from the assessed value when they come and issue the final, the revised rolls, but also the potential with the only having now three major industry in the market now and this concern that LP brought to the, in one of the discussions. So I created these contingents, just again for the discussion, but when I present another four alternatives, because the draft one right now is 2% and 20%. So on alternative A, if we decide to increase 2.5% our cross, including the industry, not the 20%, but 2%, then I maintain a contingency of 30,000 for air liquid and that would generate another extra 64,000 on the top of what we are getting right now. Alternative B, I maintain the 20% increase of major industry, but 2.5 to all the others and then we get an additional 108,6,000. And alternative C and D is 3% and 4% our cross, but the draft one was built on the How this would impact, because like I said, right now in the current structure, we are creating a surplus in both sides for accumulated surplus and reserve. Any extra amount coming in, we're going to be able to increase the surplus or increase the portion that we are sending to capital, to PRA capital allocation. This exercise where all the managers went through line by line item on the budget, we are in also extra revenue that came in confirmed by B C Hydro, they'll bring about 354,000 more for 2020 on their, in lieu. We are able to increase from the original PRA five point. So when we created the budget last year, we estimated, sorry, 5.6 million allocated to PRA. With all this work that was performed, we found another 975,000 that we are able to add, being now 6.6 million of allocation, which resulting 44% of capital allocation. With the alternatives, you're going to see alternative A increasing at 45%, alternative B would maintain the same, alternative C, and then alternative D, you'd move 46%. But that's based on these additional increases. But right now we manage to almost a million extra on PRA. For operational expenditure, the binder, we provided a detailed per department breakdown and also per function. So the key, the key expenses like salary, contracts, and we do give an explanation per department and key activities, what was the reason for the key reduction. The major increase was insurance, which we brought on the budget assumption, 18% of increase due to the hard market. And on salary and wages, we have some explanations attached to the report. For general capital projects, I would like to address, and I don't have a table here, but we do have, we are estimating, because I can't see, 19 million, 19.90 million in project. But the truth is there is approximately 15 million, which is funded, if approved, by two grants and it's the project relates to the Encana Events Parking and the 96th Avenue. And on page 14 of the report, we kind of give the detail about what are those projects. So right now, the grants are not approved. We sent those grant requests back in March. We haven't received the confirmation yet, but there is a portion that is spent, that will be funded by us, which is 2.7 million for the general projects, which is the 96th Avenue and then the Encana Parking. If the grants are not approved, then in the next draft, we will replace those projects with other projects that management will bring forward. So right now on the budget, we are presently assuming that we will get those grants. For equipment pool, Duncan mentioned about early about the airport, the ISER truck. This is a preliminary number, 100,000 over 481,000 in equipment pool. We expect by draft two, we're going to be able to get a different figure and then determine how we will proceed. General carry forward, this is based on an estimation that estimated, estimative number that was by the end of October and how much will you be bringing to, to be carried forward for 2020 and how the detail of that is on the binder with explanation for every single For water, the only, so management worked pretty hard also to identify savings on the operational side. And for increase, we identified the 2.4% of CPI that will be effective by January 1st and then was approved the adoption. However, we also need to use a contingency here because of air liquid closure. They are a significant user of water portion, so we need to reduce it in almost 100,000 deconsumption on water for, for air liquid. But seeing so, we still managed to bring a surplus for both water and sewer. And also the capital projects for water and sewer are on the binder and the same thing for sewer. So talking about debt servicing, the debt servicing is gradually reducing. We had, we are 27 million long-term debt back in 2018. We're going to be by 2019 about 24 million and gradually it's decreasing. So the expectation is by actually 2027, we will be at 5 million if we don't get any more borrowing and this is by payment of the principles and actuarial adjustment. This direct affect our debt servicing too, which gradually be reducing by the payments of the principal and interest. There was a request about what is our capacity, because right now we are around 3.8 million. So our capacity of debt services up to 25% of the revenue, which would be around 12.7 million. So we still have a margin of 8.4 million if we would be interested in borrowing more and here gives the option, if you'd borrow in five years, how much principal we would be able to get up to 39.8 million and then in 10 years at the MFA current rate, 73.9 million. And that would be the breakdown annually for estimated interest and estimated payments. So that's our capacity right now, additional capacity. For accumulated surplus, we did mention on the budget assumption that we had a 2.3 million adjustment that we need to remove it from capital in order to fix an issue that was coming from many years ago. But in the end, still we can see on the current year that all surplus was brought to the table for accumulated surplus and reserves. As a result of all this work, what we are suggesting for draft one is that the 2% increase to the mill rate for all classes, excepted for major industry at 20% adjusted by the contingency accrue of 131 until we get the role, the revised roles that we'll be receiving by the end of December. So on draft two, we're going to be able to see exactly what is the revised numbers that B C Assessment have and how this is impacting on the contingency numbers. For 2020 peace river agreement, under the current amount that we are recognized of 15.05 million, we would be allocating 6.63 million to capital of 44%. The utility rate would be updated still and kept at the current increase of 2.4%. This city would not enter on any long-term borrowing for 2020 and finance the current capital project with the current year surplus generated by the proposed increase. And then there are some, as part of the initiatives that have been in discussion, we already reflected some of the savings here. For example, the B C Transit, after the resolution that we will started, we will reduce the Route 3 in July next year. So we are able to reflect a portion of that in the expenditure numbers of B C Assessment and we also, B C Transit, and we also had some savings on training for the fire department, which total 154,000 in expenditure and of course a reduction of 25 of revenue too because of this change. So this is a very broad summary. If you have any questions.
Thanks, Flavia. Thank you. Questions from council?
My first question, if I may.
Councilor Parslow.
Is a very simple one. Duncan, you told me that I could find in one of the tabs, the Sudeten Hall issue and I looked last night and couldn't find it and I did this look and I still can't find. So what tab number is that under?
Through your worship, it's, it's actually report 2.2 on the agenda. It's not in the binder, it's a separate article in the budget agenda.
You didn't tell me that.
My fault entirely, I apologize.
Just not listening.
Okay, I do have a more.
Go ahead.
Question. Thanks, Duncan. To do with the Louisiana Pacific, I just need my memory stirred up a little bit here. We, we reviewed industrial tax rates on similar sort of heavy businesses in the, I think it was in the north or it may have been provincially and determined that we would shoot for the So why would we change that? I mean, nobody's going to say, oh, increase our taxes if they think, you know, nobody wants their taxes increased. I thought we had a rational basis for determination. So obviously, you know, people will say, well, we don't want to pay any more taxes, but why would we, why would we abandon a very rational approach? That's my question.
So when we did the review of the tax rate for heavy industry, and I'm going to go back two years or three years, we were at the, we were at the very, very low end of the industrial tax rate for really northern British Columbia, that we looked at those comparables and the average was around 26 or 28 bucks and we were at about 18 and we kept the rates at that time consistent with our commercial properties to try and encourage and engage the heavy industry development in this city. And then we realized that they were very low compared to what other communities would be charging until we took the initiative after that study to raise them up to, you're right, in that range of where we would still be, that we wouldn't be up in the Kinney Mat or range of where their, our Tumblr Ridge, charge $80,000 for heavy industry, but we would be higher. What we didn't see in that, and council certainly didn't see, and we got it from Louisiana Pacific this year, was they also faced a fairly significant impact in their assessment of the property and that combined with the increase in the mill rate really got them with a fairly significant impact on their tax bill that they received. And they've asked us this year and they met with us to say, could you guys have a look at that because another 20% increase puts that much more burden on us. That's the background I can give you from the meetings I've had with them. Duncan?
Sure. So through your worship and just, just for clarification, the recommendation as it stands right now in the report is 2% increase to the mill rate for all classes except major industry, which is 20%. So council's direction in 2019, as we went through that budget, was 20% in 2020 and that's what you have in front of you. Flavia has just noted within the report that this is something that council's going to have to decide on as we move forward and, and has provided some contingency because there have been changes within major industry this year and it may impact that area, right?
Did Louisiana Pacific appeal the assessment?
They did appeal their assessment. Go ahead, Flavia.
They, through your worship, yes, they did appeal and they got some reductions on their assessed value.
So was this appeal launched before their concerns, especially to mayor, what's the timing of?
Yeah, no, they've, now they're seeing another tax increase this year that they're concerned about impacting their operations once again, after the appeal.
Yeah, after the appeal, exactly. Because the appeal isn't till March, they have the deadline to appeal, so they appealed as the deadline, but the concern came actually after the crisis on the forest industry. That's when they brought their comment.
So what's the net difference between, what's the 20% translate into in dollars?
Approximately 100,000.
$100,000 increase in tax, so like one employee equivalent. Okay, can I continue?
Yep.
Okay. Page nine of the binder, not what's in the. And again, I just want to make sure I am understanding this as best as I can. So if you're with me, Flavia, there, I noticed with surprise and, and I'm somewhat pleased about this, is that in 2020 in the draft, the allocation to capital is gone up by about $1 million.
So, sorry, just tab nine or page nine?
Page nine of 27.
Okay, so of the report.
Yeah, page nine of the operational report.
Thank you, sorry for that first. Page nine of 27 of the draft one budget. Okay, so that means the percentage to capital is 44%, okay? Now then, I notice in 2021 that drops back down again in this projection to 5.4 and drops again to 5.2 the year afterwards, but you've got a star by the side of these years.
Yes.
So essentially, way I'm understanding this is you're drawing all those figures from the five year. you're drawing all those figures from the financial plan and you have not done any further calculations other than to pick out from that. The only figures that you're proposing in this draft one has been, if I can use the expression "your" figures, is that line one, right?
Yeah.
That line two for 2020 draft one. So my note here, this seems to be a temporary blimp, is not a fair representation. It's just, we should just read it as a line item and not make any extrapolations for subsequent years. Thank you. Okay. I don't have many questions, so if I say drop the floor to continue. Oh, yes. I've got a note here, side here. In this draft budget, you, I'm being careful what I say here. In this draft budget, you have assumed that the model for funding tourism is as it currently is. By this time next year, we might be looking at a different model for funding.
I would decide you.
Is that fair comment?
Through your worship, as part of the strategic priorities, we're looking at all revenue opportunities for tourism.
Right. But you've imported into this draft the current funding model. Good, thank you. Page 16 of 27. Page 16, under paving. I was surprised that there was only three items listed. 96th Avenue, 15th Street rehabilitation, and roadworks geotechnical investigation. And that, of course, much of the money for those two more costly projects is from an infrastructure grant external to the city. I would have thought we would have some more projects for, given the state of our roads. Is there a reason for that? Just inability to have funding without going to a referendum or borrowing money? Is that right?
So through your worship, first of all, the two projects are 12.8 million in value in grant funding. And as Flavia noted, we will wait until December and hopefully we'll all have some notices whether we've been approved for those grants or not. If not, you will see that same amount of funding the city's leveraging put into other paving projects.
I understood that.
And Kevin probably has a better idea what those look like if council would like to know now. But this is really balancing out the capital available and ensuring that we're dealing with our highest risk areas and balancing our budget.
And in fairness, there's 1.8 allocated outside of the grant money for the Encana Events Center paving parking project. And if that, we don't get the grant funding for that, that I'm assuming would roll into another infrastructure project that would likely be a roadwork.
It will be roadworks and Kevin maybe just want to comment on what Plan B is if the grants are not approved.
Through your worship, the plan is, is if we don't get the grants and we're able to pull that part portion out of there would be to extend the 15th Street project. Right now, we're starting at about 105th Avenue, working north towards Alaska. The way it's set up right now in the budget for 1.9 won't quite get us all the way to Alaska Avenue. But if we're able to pull that additional funding, we'll extend it to Alaska and beyond. Our goal is to get 15th right to the top because it's a main corridor and it's also a church.
So just a flag for me is, is the adequate, I don't think it is, but I don't know what choices we have either, trying to be fair, other than borrowing money. So the other is, I appreciate the layout, particularly like the photographs of all the projects. I think there's a lot of work being done. And the only other comments I would want to make are to do with the survey results. So I have no other comments about the budget.
Good, thank you. Counselor Earl?
Just a comment on the industrial rate. So we initially, and correct me if I'm wrong. So what happened was LP for the longest time was the only industrial property in town. And then when it shuttered its doors, was it seven, eight years back? I think the rate was dropped down because the assessment on it was marginal anyway. And they were trying to incentivize keeping the property there as opposed to having some sellable ones and whatnot. Then it opened up. We got Air Liquor, we got Ferris, we got...
AltaGas.
AltaGas. And then, so last year, we looked at it again, found that we were on the low end, raised it, and we wanted to do it in two years so as to not make it too impactful. So I think last year's increase brought us pretty much in line with Fort St. John, maybe slightly under. And then next year's increase would put us, so looking at the state of forestry in British Columbia and how fortunate we are to still have a mill operating here, maybe at the worst case there, delay this further increase until there's some stability back in the industry. So I'd support that. Yeah, I mean, just general comment, good work. I'm pleased, obviously, to see the overall operations budget reduced by 3%. I think is indicative of great buy-in from staff with respect to the new strategic direction from this council. And probably accounts for a whole lot of why that allocation to capital is going from, was it 36% we had it slated for when we came on board or something like that, up to 44 this year. So good work to them and I'll put some details back to comments.
Thank you. Counselor Lecter?
Thanks, your worship. Thanks for the comments. So a number of things. Obviously, we're working hard at the budget to try and, you know, certainly reduce operational costs to shift the PRA allocation over to capital. We're on that plan. The one thing I know when I go through the budget, I'll start with the industrial tax rate. Understanding that nobody would like an increase, I get that. But bringing us back to the average, I think is where we were shooting for. I'm 100% in favor of that. I will follow in what Counselor Earl has just said. Noting the state of the forest industry in today's market, I would be prepared to entertain a discussion on looking at that rate versus going the 20%. Do I think 2% is where I would like it to be? No, it's not. But 20%, but again, not for the long term. I think once the recovery, and I'm an optimist, in the forest sector occurs, then I think we have to have that discussion to get it back to the average. It was well below. The other one we see in our budget, and this goes to Counselor Parslow's talk about the capital side, we have a plan that shows no borrow for seven years. I don't think that's realistic. I'm not a big person to go in debt, but I think when you look at our capital needs out there, our roads, our infrastructure, I think I'm okay next year, working through the budget the way it is, with no debt being incurred, if that's a possibility. I think it is. But I think the years to come, we've got to look at what our debt scenario is. And I think we're in relatively good shape when you look at what our debt payments are versus what we're allowed to. And you showed that slide, very significant. I think many of our roads, and Kevin has touched on a couple of them, but I think all you have to do is drive our city to see the need that we've got. So I think we're going to have to reevaluate our long-term position on debt incurring that. The major capital projects being 96th and the Encana parking lot next year that we have in there are based significantly, and I would suggest solely on receiving those grants. $7 million to pave a parking lot at Encana Center. Yeah, well, that's, it's staggering to me. We don't, this thing is not that old. And here we're pumping that kind of money in when we see those roads. I think in order to leverage the 1.9, and I'm ballpark, 1.9 of our money to get there five plus is probably not a bad idea because I don't think we'll ever see that again. Whether we'll get that or not is a whole other issue, but I think we're going to have to start reflecting on, I'm a big supporter, and we just came through the last 10 days. The Encana Events Center does wonderful things. But at some point, we're going to have to make, I think, an informed decision of how much money we can put into that over the next 10 years. It is hurting us, is my view. The surplus that we talk about in the water and sewer, and I think that's a positive, we have to, have to as a city, build our capital reserves up and our operational side. I think we have some reserves right now, in my mind, not the comfort level I would like to see there. But as we continue to work with the budgets we have today and what we see for the future, we're going to be in a better position. And capital reserves are a huge part of what we have to focus on going ahead. When we look at how we, sorry, can I just?
Yeah, no, keep going.
I want to go back to borrowing. I would really like us, as we move forward with capital projects, and I spoke on this before, I think we have to find a different way to go through our paving. I mean, the thought that we want to pave X street in Dawson Creek, a petition comes forward from the residents, says, oh, we don't want it. We let it deteriorate more and instead of costing $1 million to recap it, now four years down the road, we're spending $4 million to redo the whole road. That makes no sense to me. To the public, I think if they understood that you may defer it, but it's going to cost you more, we've got to find a way that, because somebody that's on a street says, I don't want it, that they could incur and spread that cost to other taxpayers in the city, makes very little sense to me. So I definitely, and we spoke on this before, want to look at a new way. When we go to the market to borrow money, and I think we will, is my read, within the next seven years, I would really like us to pursue the ability for the city to issue bonds. Maybe we do a road bond. Maybe we raise our own money within the residents of Dawson Creek or surrounding areas. Says, look, you can invest X dollars in the city on a 10-year bond or debenture. And I don't know, I think we can work through the MFA to do this and we'll return you, and I'll just use broad numbers for the sake of it, 2.5%. Probably better than what most people are getting today in any market out there. I think that you would get buy-in from a public to say, I'm going to help my own city. I'm going to invest dollars and I have a return coming and I'm seeing. I just think the debenture issue or the bond raising is something I'd like us to look at on that. And a question I have, based on our equipment pool and the slide we had there, Flavia. The numbers that we put, are they net of trade-ins? Do we base everything on a value trade-in or where does the money go, say, from our old mini backhoe, for example? Are those numbers reflective of a trade-in cost or do you know off the top?
No, I don't. If there is a trade-in, definitely goes to the revenue side. And if we, it depends on also what we have in the TCA, in the tangible capital assets. If it's fully depreciated, it's a revenue that we would be offsetting against the buying of or replacing the equipment. But if there is a balance still not fully depreciated, that may be just offsetting loss.
Okay. In the report also, we talk about water, and I'm just flashing through. We talk about going to a possible levy above the average use, and I've got to find that. You know, we spent a lot of money on water in the last number of years in Dawson Creek to make sure we have it. It's part of our livelihood. I get concerned, I think people, and I'm one of them, I'm a yard guy. I like to do it. And, but we got to be careful. We're not pricing things to the point. I think we're very conservation-minded, but I just want to caution us on, water is something we've seen significant increases over the years on. And I just don't want it to getting to the point where it's impacting more so family life for people to do what they want to do. These are more philosophical comments and direct related to the line items because I think we're going to have time to, although this is our draft, we still have some issues we have to discuss on that. The other one would be the 2.7 million outside of the 96th Avenue and the Encana Events Center. If we don't get those grants, I think it's 2.7 we're left with. We're talking 15th, and I'm sure we'll have that discussion. Remain optimistic we get them, but there may be other priorities that we've seen come forward over the last year. The extension is always good, as you talk about, we'll find ways to do it. But thanks for the work you've done. I mean, it's amazing. And I think the amount of time and effort spent by staff is incredible. And I think the amount of time and effort spent by council to get our heads wrapped around these numbers is significant. So we try and do it. I think we're in a good spot, but not without difficult choices ahead. That's, you know, we're talking about a good budget here. There's still some difficult choices. And for the residents to understand what we're going to face over the next five to seven years, it isn't going to mean that Dawson Creek isn't one of the greatest places in the world to live, but it's going to mean we're going to make some tough choices on your behalf. And you're going to see it starting this year. You started to see it last year. Moving $7 million out of your operational budget to move it over to capital from fair share money or PRA is not the easiest thing to do. I'll quit my little talk now for a while.
Thank you.
For a short time.
Turn the page, turn the page.
Duncan?
So just take this opportunity through your worship, just to highlight a couple, a couple pieces that Flavia kind of breezed through fairly quickly, but I think they're, they're pretty significant and just to highlight. So something that we've done in the past is we've used our surplus to kickstart our next year's budget. And that was something that we had done for a number of years and resulted in maybe not having as much funding in our accumulated surplus or reserve. So this year, and maybe even last year, but more so this year, is one of the first years where that surplus was exclusive into the reserve, into the accumulated surplus. And we're really focused on anticipated revenues and balancing within the existing year. So that's, that's a pretty big step as far as trending in the right direction and building up those reserves. And, and we kind of cruised through that fairly quickly. So I just wanted to point that out. Something else, and we've talked quite a bit about it, but there is that $131,000 contingency within that property tax rule. And really, that, that adjusts for any market changes that, that we are anticipating. And in the past, we've seen as much as $60,000 to $70,000 changes through the preview assessment rule, just on appeal and some other decisions that have been made. So we've built in that contingency, which again, typically in the past hasn't been done. So you have a very positive outlook in front of you and there are contingencies. And we have really underestimated in a lot of areas. Something else that we, we breezed through also is the Peace River Agreement. And, you know, 2020, there will be a $1 million increase to that number across the region. Typically, we've received 30% of whatever the province has been providing. So we're budgeting based on 15. Last year, we received 15.2. And there is an additional million that will be split out among the region through that funding. So we feel that we've underestimated. Now, of course, we got stung in 2017 by $1 million. So we, we definitely will continue to underestimate that, that number. But there is a very good chance that that number will increase and there will be some additional funding for capital. The only other piece is around the council initiatives. And again, we've under-budgeted at 154,000, just based on the timing of some of those changes. And those changes again will be fully realized in 2021. But it is possible that our revenues may not decrease as much or we will realize more savings. So we've really tried to budget, budget a worst-case scenario. And there's really some opportunity there where, where these numbers will increase. And again, just to reiterate what council has said, incredible amount of time has gone into the budget, staff, finance department, all of the departments. And this year's budget really seemed to be a rolling document that continued on through the entire year. And, and I think maybe Counselor Earl had nailed it when he said that, that it's clear that staff understand the lens and the strategic priorities of council and moving the budget in that direction. So a lot of really good work, a lot of clear direction through the strategic planning from council, and that's aligned. And then finally, just, you know, as we move through this, if council's looking for any significant changes or information as part of that second draft, that would be good to be included in the resolution today so we can ensure that it's clear and we get that information back to you.
Thank you. So I want to add a couple of things. And first, to the industrial tax rate and after my discussions with LP, two things. The average that we look to accomplish, for me, we need to use the term, we want to keep it reasonable in the lens of where and how we are competing with communities. Because there are some communities that rely heavily on their industrial tax rate for their revenue. And that tax rate is $80 or $90,000, when ours was 18, and neighboring were 26 and 27 or 28. And so by getting ours up to 27, I don't want us to be in the range where in the mid-range of communities who rely completely on the industrial tax rate at a, at a huge level. And I think inappropriate. So I think it's really good for us to continue to look at those communities that are comparable to us for that tax rate. And I think it's worthwhile for us to do that always. And so from that perspective, I think it'll be worthwhile for us to maybe revisit that. And I didn't, also... And I didn't, also, last year, I certainly didn't anticipate the, it's always about the check they write, and they did write a fairly significant check increase as a result of not only an increase in assessment, an increase in that tax rate. So, I just think it's a healthy discussion that we have, always taking all that information into consideration. Last year at this time, the anticipated allocation of PRA funding to our capital budget was going to be 3.8 million, and this year we're at 6.6. And so, I think that's a credit to council and staff of the diligence that we put towards the budget process last year in 2019, where we reduced a 1.4 million out of spending from the budget that is now positively and favorably impacting that, number one, strategic priority we have of moving that fair share, peace river agreement money out of our operating budget into capital, and we're seeing the effects of it this year of the work that council and administration have done, which I think is very healthy. I want to talk to the debt as well, because to me, this council also, as I think of, and past, debt in 2018 was 27 million, it's anticipated to be at 5 million in 2027. I agree with Councilor Lextrum and the other comments about that. We need to make sure we always keep that balance in place, and how do we make the most effective use of it? But it gives us the opportunity to manage that future piece of it. And the other one is our water and sewer utility, and I think the more that we're able to manage that, that's real money people, our residents are paying for their costs. We had to borrow $8 million three years ago to do the sewer trunk line expansion to build the capacity, and so, all of those things have added to it, and I hope for us that the more we're able to build the health of those utilities, the less that it may impact our residents and the costs of those services in the future, that any place where we reduce the checks that our residents write for water, sewer, and taxes is a good day, and I think water and sewer is another opportunity. I want to thank you guys, obviously, all of the staff and council and folks who have done the work on this, and it's one step in a journey that council have said we're going to take on that strategic priority of the next seven years. Councilor Earl?
I was just going to make a couple comments on the survey, unless anybody has something they'd like to say about that.
Yep.
So, first of all, to the 194 residents that took the time to complete it or partially complete it, thank you. Obviously, in a town of just under 13,000 people, 200 residents completing a survey isn't exactly representative of the entire city necessarily, but as in any democracy, it's not a spectator sport, and the squeaky wheels get the grease. So, looking at it, it seems as though it's somewhat of a mixed bag with respect to what people like to see around service reductions, wage reductions, obviously, different levels of understanding throughout, depending on the department and whatnot. But it does seem, with respect to how we pay for the programs or services, or how we fund those programs and services, that far and away, the reduce and eliminate existing programs was head and shoulders above some of the other options as far as the first preference of people. And I just want to say this out loud, so that when we have our meeting in February and in budgets moving forward, staff remembers this, just because I remember when we were all running for election and we all said addressing the fiscal gap and reducing expenditures was a priority, and then everybody voted for us, and we came up with a budget, and we had 200 or 300 people swinging from the rafters telling us, well, we didn't mean that. So, it's, I do appreciate the feedback, and we'll do our very best with this information. And for those who didn't fill it out, I guess February is your next opportunity to tell us what you think of what we decided.
Thank you. Further comments, Councilor Parswell?
I'd just like to continue with Jeremy left off there. The survey results, just a few comments. I noticed in the answer to the question, what would you, given the high level of demand for the city's programs and services, what option would you choose to pay for new and or enhanced programs or services? Please rate your top three. And number one, reduce or eliminate existing programs. That is consistent with the survey results that was conducted two years ago. Rather than increase taxes or fees, charges, or borrow more money, reduce programs. So, I found that was interesting in that it was consistent. Then, the other question, if you've given $100 to spend on services provided by the city, how would you spend it? Praise your choice from one to six. I noticed with interest that the least, the bottom two would be the exact bottom two that I have, transportation, tourism, and economic development. Question three concerns the peace river agreement, and again, I would tend to say I would have answered the questionnaire exactly the way the public did, increase funding received from PRRD and increase fees to rural PRD residents. So, I thought that was interesting. What are the top three services you would reduce or eliminate? Reduce transit service, reduce recreation and arts programs, reduce beautification, and flower budget. I could go on, but I found it was very interesting, and I really must admit, I was surprised, I don't know whose initiative it was, but I'm glad that you did this survey, whoever's idea it was. Initially, Flavia, I was thinking, well, why are we doing this? Because we had a survey two years ago, but it's good to see, and it was a little more detailed. And I also appreciated that caption underneath where we saw the range of where people's votes were. But again, I think Jeremy alluded to this, it's a little more complicated than this, but this gives us some sense. I mean, just if I can flag one, the airport. Well, medevacs are extremely important. We have to have an airport for medevac, so it's not a straightforward issue. None of them are, but I think you said it, I appreciate the people who did take part, and hopefully, there'll be some future engagement like this. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Thank you. Councilor Lextrum?
Just another question budget-wise and the work you've done, page 19 and 27 on that. One of the issues you talked about was the bill payment, water and sewer bill payment, and about how some users will not pay until right at the end, and there's no penalty. We have to impose that. I mean, I'm not, it makes no sense to me, every other bill you get in your life, if you don't pay it on time, there's a repercussion for you. So, I would like to think we're going to include that into this year's budget immediately. And we're billed on a bi-monthly, I believe, is how that is. So, maybe we give 30 days, and following that, the 10% begins, or whatever number we're going to come with that we want to discuss. But there should be something to carry, to have the city carry it, means all the taxpayers carry that forward for you, because we're paying it. So, I certainly would like to think, and, you know, that we're going to include that in some form for this actual budget of 2020. The other one, and we talked about it earlier, your worship, the planning function we're involved in with the regional district, I do think we want to come with an agreement very soon on that to save money for the 2020 budget as well. I think that's going to help us. Every little bit we do is going to help the people, the businesses, and our city as we move forward. But I know we're going to look for a motion at the end, but I would certainly encourage us to have that included as well, that we have our administration work towards a formula that's, you know, reflective of what happens in the real world out there.
And so, would that, so just a question, would that be a requirement? Would we need to change our fees and charges bylaw or in order to do that? Is it contained that, building that penalty into a?
Yeah, you need to amend. We will need to amend it.
We need to amend our bylaw.
So, the direction can be to update that bylaw to reflect that.
And by a separate, we would need, as a separate motion from the budget bylaw, the budget that we're, provisional budget work.
Yeah, through your worship, just to be clear, that a separate motion would be a better idea.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Just the other one, I know that we're going through this today, and we've talked about this in the past, the recommendation we're looking at should have moved, we're talking about a 2% increase in the mill rate. Is there any discussion, are we going to talk about, is that too high, is that too low? When you look around, I mean, the dollars that we collect aren't put in anybody's pocket, they are put back into services, and we're seeing that. But I think we want to have that discussion prior to moving this recommendation. Are we set on that, or is there any? Or are we looking for the formal recommendation to be approved today? Or do we want to engage in further discussion? Like, I'm just not sure what the intent is closing out the meeting today.
Yeah, and so, it was my expectation today that council would give direction to administration on the report that Flavia has produced in regards to this initial draft budget. It contains the recommendation for a change to the mill rates, it contains the allocation of all of the different components for operational capital, da-da-da-da. Once we, and now, we're going to have a follow-up meeting in February, once we get the revised assessment roll, which will also have some impacts to that allocation of revenues, which may require us to do some changes to that rates. But I think today, we're looking for general direction from council. Are you accepting the recommendations administration have made with a 2% with the allocation of capital, with the stuff that's been presented? So, I agree with you, I think, are we, are there any components to within that that council wished to give direction to administration? Councilor Earl and Councilor Parswell?
I'll just give some quick feedback comment on Councilor Lextrum's point. So, if we're entirely, I mean, I don't like the idea of raising taxes until we get through the other piece of this, which is expenditures. Having said that, the reason I haven't, I'm willing to give direction, proceed as is for now, is because looking back at last year's budget consultation process, I don't think anybody who stepped up to the microphone to give us feedback mentioned the, what was it, 2.5% increase last year? That was kind of a non-issue, so while it might not be my, you know, I keep an eye on that, that might not be something. I do, and second part is, if we are going to raise taxes, the more gradually we can do it, the better, and the sooner we can do it, so that we can start to bridge that divide between, you know, if we wait until year seven and realize we have to raise taxes, then it's a much more drastic, much more drastic increase. I do have some reservations, if you look at the percentage about where the tax burden is landing, that it's increased on commercial by 3%. I think, you know, we've talked about it, the spread across industry, commercial, residential, and talking to a lot of our local retailers, the market is very, very soft this year. So, I do have significant reservations about that, but I'm willing to proceed as is simply because last year, I thought it would be a huge, I thought our residents would, you know, tear our heads off over that, and it was not something that got mentioned at all. So, until I hear otherwise, I think this is a prudent course.
And if you're looking at changing that rate, then we change the allocation of the 44% from capital going, from the PRA staying in within operating, and then you can reduce that burden on that. And the shift of burden to residential or commercial, we only have residential and commercial basically with three and heavy industry, so if you shift it off commercial, you're putting it on residents, right? That's the, so let me just go through them. 2% increase in the mill rate for all classes except for major industry. We do have a 20% built into it, although Flavia has built a contingency in there of 131 to allow for that impact to air liquid once we get the revised assessment roll. Peace River Agreement allocation to capital is going to be 44% this year, so we move 6.63 million from PRA is now moved into capital. All the water and sewer rates will increase by 2.4%, which reflects that CPI from September 18 to 2019. We don't enter into any long-term borrowing for 2020 and finance the current capital projects and the current year's surplus generated by the proposed increases, and we reduce the city's operational budget by $154,000 as per council's initiatives identified in the report. So, that's basically the recommendations that council have to deal with. Councilor Parswell?
So, you read the last bullet, and that was something else that did circle it. You left out the $25,000 in revenue. Is that a typo error? Does that make sense at that last bullet? My mind says reduce the city's operational expenditure budget by $154,000 and $25,000 in revenue reduction.
Through your worship, that's a reduction for transit revenue.
It's not in the recommended draft on budget that I have.
Okay, it's on my recommendation.
It's on the report or the presentation I have.
Yeah, and we've reduced the, we've reduced the operating revenue by $25,000.
I was reading the earlier stuff, sorry.
Okay. Well, I can support the recommendation, notwithstanding what Council Lextrum said, I mean, everything is subject, we've got to have a discussion about the industrial. We've got to have, I mean, we're not keeping up with inflation at 2%. That concerns me. I mean, residents, residents need to know that the trajectory we're on, and then you've got the comment which Jeremy made, which is very valid as well, if we don't make the cuts and we suddenly have a whopping tax increase, it's got to be more gradual. So, but I think to go forward, it's a damn good job, and I think we've got some points that we need to talk about further, tax rate, industrial tax rate, what happens if we don't get the grants, et cetera. Yeah, and I've jumped to with not borrowing money this year, next year maybe.
Councilor Lextrum?
Just following through, and I mean, I find myself in support of where we're headed with this budget and future budgets. I mean, that's part of the, I mean, as difficult as it is, people, and, you know, people always ask at council, are you having fun? You know?
You are the best.
Last week was awesome.
This may sound sadistic, but you have fun because it's a challenge. I mean, that's why we ran. We ran to bring ideas, but I don't think anybody runs for a council or a position of elected office thinking everything is great, and I'm going in to just have everybody say, you know, great job. You go in to make some difficult choices on behalf of the people that put you there, and we're doing that while maintaining the quality of life. Just on the borrowing side, and having said next year, I, you know, I'm good with no borrowing next year, let's pay down, I think future years, we have to look at that for our capital, even at the same time we're moving more money into capital from our fair share. But I really like, and you look at it again, I think it's page 23 of 27, one of the alternatives for our internal borrowing, and we spoke briefly about that. Instead of going to the market where we're through MFA, we get good results there. I talked about issuing debentures possibly or bonds, but we have the ability to borrow from ourselves, which is our capital reserves. And I think as we move forward, that is a policy that I think we want to have a discussion on. If we can borrow money from ourselves and put that interest back into the residents or the budget of Dawson Creek, it makes a lot more sense than putting that money into somebody else's pocket. So, as we build those reserves, which I spoke about, and I think everybody in this council certainly has supported the importance of that, the best way to have that utilized is, I think, to borrow from within ourselves, pay ourselves back that interest versus somebody else. Now, we also have the one, are you looking for a motion, your worship, with that 20% in there? I know it was a concern, or is that discussion going to be forthcoming at a future date?
I think it's, I think we need to bring that information back. I think we have to pass provisional budget as it is with, we need to understand it liquid when we get that revised assessment, and I think then we'll bring that information back. The currency of what we're doing with rates and other communities, and how we compare, and what it means to our budget, and then council can make a decision as to whether they want to stay with that 20% increase, or they want to modify it. As a result, I've seen that more current information, as well as the, I think, the air liquid issue to me with them closing down and the impact of that assessment, too. I think it's one conversation for us, and it's probably more realistic, we do it at that time when we have the revised roll in January or February. So, it would be my thought we would leave it in as it is today. That's our budget, that's our draft budget, and we're going to revisit it at the point when we get that revised assessment roll. Because it's air liquid as well as LP's concerns that are concerned, and I haven't heard from AltaGas or Ferris about their operations either yet, so. Duncan, you have a question?
Yes, through your worship, and ultimately, what you're approving today is to take this to the second draft, essentially, and as part of that second draft, we can provide some more detail on property tax information, if that's what council's looking for, whether it be major, commercial, or residential, and bring that back, so council can make that final decision in late January.
Good.
So, I'm willing to move the recommendation as presented.
Thank you. Councilor Parswell, second. Councilor Wilbur, discussion anymore?
Not anymore.
Not anymore. All those in favor? Opposed? Not anymore. All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. And item two, point two, we have report one, nineteen-one-nine-one from the General Manager of Community Services regarding the Sudeten Hall.
Excuse me, Your Worship.
Oh, sorry. Yes, we wanted to do a second motion in regards to that ten percent penalty on the water rates for unlinked payments. And we would ask Director Administration to bring back a report with some recommendations on changes required in order to implement that ten percent penalty. Counselor Earl?
So not just water rates, all utilities presumably, on the utility bill? Are we just looking at?
Well, it's one utility bill that you get for.
Well, it's the whole utility.
Move, Counselor Wilbur, second. Counselor Lecter, discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Thank you, Brenda. Report nineteen-one-nine-one from the General Manager of Community Services regarding the Sudeten Hall and future option. So perhaps if we can have a motion for discussion. Counselor Earl, second to Counselor Wilbur. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Duncan or Ross?
Yeah. So through Your Worship, I'll start, Ross will finish.
He's the closer?
He's the closer, yeah. He's the relief. So Council directed staff to bring back Sudeten Hall as part of the budget process for 2020. That was direction provided earlier this year, and and really to make a decision regarding Sudeten Hall. There's a couple engineered reports attached to this report, and it's a, it's a hard recommendation, but it reflects some of the uncertainty regarding that building, some of the uncertainty that's been flagged within the engineers' reports. And it also reflects just our our current planning and current operation as far as shifting money from operating to capital and not expanding into some additional services. So this report has been brought back, and it does have that hard recommendation. And Ross, do you have anything else you want to add on that as far as your discussions with with Mike Zigon or any of those pieces?
Sure. Thank you, through Your Worship, members of Council. I believe you have considerable amount of information in front of you. This afternoon, we have worked with Mike Zigon at Forest Engineering. There have been a number of reports. I think that at this point in time, it would be difficult to to expand or that it would be wise to do anything further. The foundation, the footings, the building itself has been compromised so much at this point in time, it would be difficult. There are some very, pretty much Class D estimates in the Forest Reports that suggest, you know, I don't know if it's called remediation, but I think the cost would far exceed, and I'm not sure that the building itself could be remediated at this point in time. We haven't budgeted any, any money rather, in the last couple of years for amendments or upgrades or repairs. It would be significant. Of note in the building, recognizing it's this historical building that's been moved onto this site, as it sits today, it is not, the physical attributes of the building itself are not from the period. It's the finishing outside of the floor, the dance hall, the stage, some of the attributes inside the building, fascia, siding, roof, what have you on the exterior, do not represent the period any longer. So it's not, you know, in terms of it being a historic building or site, it's just, it's just not that. We have some pretty significant drainage problems in the area that would have to be, you know, addressed, remediated. It is, you know, the recommendation, recommendation rather suggests that we would be best removing the structure that's on site there. It's a good location. You've got some information before you regarding the use and some of the revenues, you know, it's a, it's a great location in the historical buildings there. But I think the best approach probably at this point in time is to look at doing something new.
Counselor Earl?
Thank you, Worship. Just have one question and a couple comments. So has this information is, are we, I hope we're not, are we surprising, would this report be a surprise to the Mile Zero Park Society, or do they know it's coming?
I've had some conversations with members of Mile Zero, so no, I don't, I don't think it's a surprise.
Because, I mean, my position would be to accept the recommendation barring, I mean, if they could come up with a realistic plan for them to take it on and remediate it, I don't think that is realistic, given the report. But I wouldn't want to close off that option without at least giving them the courtesy or doing the courtesy of having this conversation with them. Secondly, with respect to the use of the facility itself, ever since, I think it's been down for two years, three years now?
March of eighteen.
So since that time, Co-op Mercer Hall has come online. I don't know the exact dates, but I know there is a kind of hall space above the Bear's Den, Bear's Den up there. And then obviously, the Calvin Crook Center has a theater in it. So I don't know from a strictly, you know, utilitarian perspective, how much you, you know, how much need there is for more capacity for that kind of facility anyway at the moment. I'd be interested in knowing that, but I'd be surprised if Mercer Hall couldn't accommodate the difference. But yeah, I would like to know, or would like to give the Mile Zero Park Society a chance to come talk to us or for you to engage with them to see if they can come up with any realistic options. As far as the city owning it and the city trying to fix it and make it workable again, I don't, that's not something I care to take on on behalf of our taxpayers.
We do own it, though.
Oh, I know, but you know what I mean. Moving forward, if it's going to continue to stand, I'm not interested in doing it.
Counselor Parzle?
Yeah, well, just a comment. I agree with Jeremy about the engagement with the Mile Zero Park Society. I'm wondering what you're doing tomorrow night, because I know I'm going to be asked all sorts of questions about this. There's a regular meeting of the Mile Zero Park Society tomorrow evening in, at the Community Futures Office, beginning at six-thirty. It would sure help me if you were able to address this issue with them. It's a wonderful group of volunteers. They're very positive people. You're not, it wouldn't be in a lion's den, I assure you. It's a critical piece, and they've done a lot of planning, and they're really waiting to what, for some idea of where the city is going with this, right? So I just throw that out. If it's inconvenient, we'll do it another time or we'll have a special meeting. But I think it's important to do that so that they can get some sense of direction with this project. The Sudeten Hall was well-used. I'm sure its rates would be a fraction of Mercer Hall's rates. I don't know of Mercer, what their rate is, but I've seen some bills the city has paid for the use of Mercer Hall. But it was a well-used facility. It, and I know the desire is that the hall be redone, and they're quite willing. They, I know that they feel that they could probably, through grant applications, so on, probably manage a project that's about a million dollars with the closing in of the basement, you know, getting rid of the basement and so on. But they, they don't want to make any commitments until they have a engineer's report. Has that been fully explored? If it has, they need to be told that. That would, then that would help me explain things because you're the authority. I'm just, just the liaison person.
Thank you.
But I thoroughly enjoy doing that, but.
Yes. Thank you, through Your Worship. A couple of things, Counselor, I believe I could make that meeting tomorrow evening.
Okay, great.
Also, to your point about the Historical Society doing something going forward, I believe there is some value in something like that. And that might be a conversation that Council wishes to consider in terms of turning over whatever that project looks like at the end of the day.
This is the Mile Zero Park Society, sorry. Yeah, very, very different society.
And much.
Counselor Lecter?
Thanks, Your Worship, and just following through, and I would concur. It's very important we have a discussion with the society, definitely. One of the alternatives was alternative two, that we consider transfer of ownership of Sudeten Hall to the Mile Zero Park Society. That may be part of the discussion tomorrow night, that they would then take this issue on and go raise funds to do it under their wing. If it should land, and I will await, you know, the discussion tomorrow evening, I think that's going to be an important one. If the ultimate decision is it has to come down, would we entertain utilizing this as a fire training? Could we use it, you know, take out what needs to go out, have the fire departments and the volunteers show up to do? That may be a potential cost savings, maybe not certainly the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, but maybe there's a use there. I'm not sure if we pursue that or whether we can even do that anymore. I know it used to happen, but if the decision is made that we have to demolish it, I'd like to pursue that as one option if it's available to us.
So through Your Worship, we'll take a look at that, depending on how we proceed forward, but that's something we can look at.
Counselor Wilber?
Well, I kind of was on those lines, but not the fire department. But what I do know, just in the renovation world right now, is salvage rights and is selling off the flooring and the things that can be reused. People buy that and they pay good money for it. So maybe there's recouping costs. We have to go down that road under salvage rights before we burn it.
I thought we were going to blow it up.
We're not blowing it up. I would rather see the Mile Zero Park Society, if they could do something and get it back up and running, I think that's the most viable option and and best for the area. But if it came down to the road that we had it, then I would like to also explore that salvage rights component and selling off the pieces that are historical and can be refurbished.
And so, through Your Worship, just one, one small point that I'll make. The engineering report has some breakdown of some costs, so we'll make sure that we emphasize that at the meeting tomorrow night as far as if we were going to do some foundation work. And it's, it's not really the ability to do that, it's, it's really the outcome if you were to do that. And it may not, the deflection may not come back, and there may be additional costs. And there's many services within the building that are grandfathered. So it's, it's really those additional costs, not, not really the ability or feasibility of lifting it and doing it. That's, that's possible. And that's really where the decision point will come. And the engineer cannot, you know, confirm that that building will settle back to its original state once you lift it up. The rest of the information is there, and and we've asked him, you know, will it?
Yeah.
And essentially he said, I can't, I can't tell you yes or no. So really, it comes down to if you want to take that risk, knowing you may have to make further renovation after you've lifted it and put it on a foundation.
So having remember and recall the conversation we had, this building is at risk of collapse.
It's not at risk of collapse, or or else we would have condemned it off, but it's, there's significant movement in its.
The teleposts are, some of them are bowstring tight. There's so much pressure on them that they're, and some of them aren't even supporting it. And so to me, Counselor Earl?
Yeah, so I mean, if the Mile Zero Park Society decided this is something they were willing to take on, I think based on what I've read and what I've seen, it would be a Herculean task. One thing, I do think we still owe them the courtesy of giving them the opportunity to provide some feedback. One thing I would say with respect to alternative two, was it where they, we turn over ownership of the building to them? My concern is we do that, and everybody gets into it with the best of intentions, and then you have this dilapidated building sitting there for ten years while people try and get the funding together for it. I mean, I know, as Charlie was saying, they're a group of optimists. To hear Stu Flynn tell it, he could give them like two or three strong backs and he could have it sorted out in a long weekend. But I do want to make sure that if we are, you know, and going to entertain turning over ownership of the building for a project like this, that there be some expectations around timelines, because you don't just want it to sit there and cave in on itself over ten years and then, okay, well, we got to clean it up anyway.
Legally, I don't know that we could give it to anybody else because it's sitting on city property. And I don't think we could divest ownership of a building when it's sitting on city property. Duncan?
So through Your Worship, there, there's a number of buildings within the agreement at the Mile Zero Park.
That they own.
That the Historical Society own and they accept liability for. So we have split some of those, those out.
Chairman?
So I would just sort of, it'd be appropriate now to make the motion to, I guess, table this until Charlie and Ross have a chance to speak with the Mile Zero Park Society, and then we can, once we get their feedback, we can decide how to best proceed.
Okay, so table till?
Second draft.
Second draft. Part of the budget. Counselor Lecter, discussion? What's that? Oh, yeah, table. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Anything further?
Brendan almost had to hook you again.
What's that?
Brendan almost had to give you the hook.
Anything further, Duncan, Flavi, for budget?
Through Your Worship, I think we have some clear direction for the second draft, and we'll bring that back. I think it's the second meeting in January, and we'll, we'll have that back in front of you.
Great job, you guys. Thank you so much. Thank you. Motion to adjourn. Counselor Kemp, Counselor Lecter, all in favor? Opposed? Carried. And we're done with open as well, I think.